Good evening. I want to make sure my mic is on. Alright, awesome. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Dabala?
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Hansak?
Present.
Councilmember Weslek?
Here.
Good evening, everyone. There will be one change in the agenda for this evening. We will not be addressing the resolution adopting council priorities as we are continuing to work through consolidation of feedback from our council members. And we will work to get that on a immediate upcoming agenda. In terms of other items this evening, we will have our legislative update from our lobbyists in Annapolis and Seacott. The voting session this evening will still consist of two items. Number one, the single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for stormwater system cleaning and video inspection services. The second item is a single reading ordinance authorizing extension of a contract with NZI Construction for street sidewalk and stormwater construction. We'll also have a presentation this evening regarding the capital improvement program, equipment replacement reserve, and fleet review, and street maintenance. We'll also have a work session this evening from our working group on committees regarding the board and committee appointments. In terms of upcoming agendas, just as a reminder for everyone, it's not too late to get a gift locally, hopefully, in honor of Valentine's Day. It's this Friday, February the 14th. On Monday, February the 17th is President's Day. City offices and facilities are closed Sunday and Monday for the President's Day holiday. On Wednesday, February the 19th, we will have two proclamations that day. Proclamation recognizing the Jordan Day on February the 23rd. Proclamation recognizing invasive species awareness week. It's February the 24th through to 28th. We'll also have our legislative updates as well as presentations from our business associations that serve our community. The Long Branch Business League, the Tacoma Langley CDA, and the Old Tacoma Business Association. We will also have a consent agenda that evening. Resolutions approved, I'm sorry, resolutions providing for appointments to boards and committees as well as a presentation on revenue sources, commercial railroad and public utility taxes, and they get property tax or fees. On Wednesday, February the 26th, the city council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We'll have a legislative update as well as a presentation from our Department of Housing and Community Affairs DC. I'm sorry, from the county's Department of Housing and Community Affairs, DCHC, DCHA Rental Inspection Program. And then we will have a voting session on the... I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. So...
We are presenting on DCHA, not DCHA coming to us.
They are coming here.
Oh, they are coming here. Wonderful. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was getting it right. So the Department of Housing and Community Affairs, DCHA, will be joining us for a presentation on the rental inspection program. And then we will have a voting session with single reading ordinance approving DHCA rental inspection contract. And so with that, we are going to move to our legislative update this evening. Anne with us.
Hello, Anne Seacott. How are you? It's been a busy week.
It has. I was making my list for tonight, and it's a long one. So, but it shouldn't take much time. Good evening, everybody. It's busy in part because, you know, it's that time of session. We've hit the bill introduction deadlines, so we shouldn't see very many more bills. We'll see a few, but not too many more bills get introduced in the next few weeks. Between what's happening this week and early next week, we have the good cause eviction bill hearing next week, which will be very important as a priority for the city. Tomorrow, Councilmember Dabala will be testifying on an important environmental bill, the Renew Act. We will be providing some testimony on delegate charcutians bill related to liquor store licenses. We will also be, we have submitted testimony on a bill she also has for the Purple Line and providing some benefits to some of the folks who've been so disproportionately impacted by the construction in the way of some limited free ridership and pre-advertising. So we're going to give that one a shot, too. We've submitted testimony on a bill related to notations on IDs for non-apparent disabilities. We've submitted testimony related to safe sidewalks, trying to improve and prioritize where the state highway administration makes improvements to sidewalks and bike lanes. And then tomorrow, the Judicial Proceedings Committee has on its vote list the unlawful restricted covenants bill that we have supported. So hopefully that, we believe that will get voted out based on the conversations I've had with folks. So those are the pieces of legislation. And then FYI, Monday night is also the District 20 District Night in Annapolis. And I'm not sure how information is getting out about that, but that'll be happening on Monday night.
Yes, and I just want to take a look at our city manager, Mr. Dispirito, because the city will be sponsoring a shuttle for folks locally who are interested in attending the District 20 Night in Annapolis. So I want to encourage folks, city manager, the deadline for signing up to be on the shuttle? Is that passed? Okay, we, no worries. We will follow up and just make sure we send out that last blitz to let people know. Wonderful. So want to encourage everyone to get down to Annapolis if you can and to interact and get to know our District 20 delegation and all of the wonderful work that they're doing in Annapolis. Any questions for Anne? I just want to thank our working group on legislative priorities. It has been a behemoth of a week. Councilmember, Councilmember Landman, Dabala, Councilmember Weslek. It has been a busy, busy week in terms of the number of bills that we've had to review and draft testimony for. So definitely want to thank you all for your continued work and for all of our staff that have responded to a series of emails about different bills that have come before us. Councilmember Dabala, did you have a question?
Yes. I was wondering, Anne, if next week maybe you could add for residents who are interested, you could add to your list to report out the immigration bills that have just been introduced. You probably don't have them right in front of you this minute, so maybe next week, because there are three now that residents in Tacoma Park might find of interest. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Any other questions? And just as a reminder for...
Those that may be watching.
We have a different mic setup this week, and so we, I'm just asking for my colleagues if you have a question or would like to speak, to please raise your hand. Alright, excellent. Thank you so much, Anne, and we will continue to get you what you need in terms of the various testimonies that we'll be turning around next week.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, so now we're going to go to public comments. Do we have any public comments on voting items this evening? And just as a reminder, we have two voting items. The single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for stormwater system cleaning and video inspection services. The single reading ordinance authorizing the extension of a contract with NZI Construction for street sidewalk and stormwater construction.
Alright, Jessie, do we have, city clerk, do we have any virtual comments on voting items this evening?
No.
Okay, wonderful. Do you have any general public comments this evening? Come on down. Yep, right over there. We just want to make sure that we get your mic. Let's see.
Is this working?
Yes.
Alright. I understand I'm to keep it at three minutes, so I will time my... Great. My name is Renata McAdams. I live at 53 Philadelphia Avenue, right across the intersection. So I'm a Tacoma Park resident, and I am here somewhat at the suggestion of Jessica Landman, my council member to whom I wrote about this, and she suggested I should come here as a starting point to request council support or public support for a dark sky night or stargazing night in Tacoma Park this coming Earth Day. I will say that for me personally, this is part of a hope that in the longer term Tacoma Park might consider increasing intentionality around nighttime lighting. We already have a light pollution ordinance, but there is a great deal of information out there about the negative effects of overlighting at night on ecosystems, on astronomy, in terms of energy use and cost, in terms of safety even, if overlighting reduces contrast and makes it difficult for people to see beyond the edge of the light, on human health and our circadian rhythms. There are a lot of studies on this. And beyond all of that, on our appreciation of the night as a thing of natural wonder and beauty. But concretely, right now, so I mean, I would hope that in the long term Tacoma Park might consider some of these things. But concretely, right now, what I would love to suggest is that this coming Earth Day is April 22nd. It's followed by Arbor Day on April 25th. Both of those fall within Dark Sky Week, as declared by Dark Sky International, which is always around the week of the new moon when the stars are most visible in April. And that week this year runs from April 21st to April 28th. And both, as I say, both Earth Day and Arbor Day fall within that week this year. So it would be a wonderful year for this. And what, you know, there would be organizing to do in terms of community, putting the word out there, education, all that sort of a thing. But I would also be looking for help in things like perhaps turning off some city lights for two hours or so, perhaps until 10:00 PM at key locations where people could gather for stargazing that evening, such as Piney Branch Field. Sunset that evening is, that week will be around 7:50, so that would be adequate time. We could do Earth Day as the date and Arbor Day as the rain date potentially. There are lots of organizations like Globe at Night that can provide specific activities for people to do that evening. Ms. Landman also had the wonderful suggestion of partnering with schools and with Adina Montgomery College, who's interested in, who might be interested in partnering with the planetarium there, leading up to it to tell people what they can be looking for. There are citizen science they can participate in. So that is my request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Do you have any virtual public comments this evening?
Yes, I believe we have Mary Machui on.
Yes. Okay. Hello, Mary Jane.
Hi, hello. I'm sorry, I can't. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Thank you. I'm just here. Again, I'm, if the, Ms. Sealot, is that her name? Anne Sealot. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Could you please tell me what's happening with the Development Disabilities Administration? I understand that they were going to take 200 million from it to help balance the budget that was $3 billion in arrears for the state. And to me, that's an extremely big thing. But the bad part of me, I feel like I'm one of these people that has the angel on one side and the devil on the other now. And part of the devil in me says, "Good, I hope that the DEI all gets kicked out" because they have treated me like garbage for 22 years. They have, I've tried to get help for my son for over 22 years, and they keep giving me lies and BS. And I know people who have a lot more money than me. I'm low income. And they're getting help. They just, it's a racket. If you're wealthy enough to hire a good lawyer, then you can get in. That's what I figured out. And I just never had the money to hire a good lawyer. I'm sorry. But that's the way justice is sometimes. And all this Trump anti-DEI is making even more stressful for him because my son's bi-racial and brown-skinned. And he, because of his autism and his attention deficit, he kind of acts differently and stands out because of that. So it really, really, really has gotten us upset. But if you could help put in a word, why isn't the Development Disability Administration made to act better? Why can't they be more fair? Why do they have to go with people who have money? I'm sorry. It's just, it bothers me. And there's some people in our group, my parents' special needs group, who do have more money. But, you know, it really helps. I hate to say it. Money can buy a certain amount of happiness because I don't know what's going to happen to my son when I die. And I'm 70, almost 77 years old. What is going to happen to him? Nothing. He's getting nothing now. I'm sorry. But anyways, thank you very much. And you have, I'm glad you came here with all the snow business and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machui. Thank you, Ms. Machui. We can address them as part of, the, do we have any council comments this evening?
Council comments, Councilmember Gilbert?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to take a second to acknowledge the passing of one of our longtime residents of Ritchie Avenue. Mr. Kenny Jones transitioned on January the 10th. At 90 years old, he was one of our first African-American police officers of record. Joined the police department in the mid-1960s. He also worked with our Washington sanitation for the city. I believe that's a little component of Public Works for some years. And when I joined the police department in 1993, I had the opportunity to meet him and have had several conversations with him throughout the years. And delightful personality and my condolences to his family. And really thankful for his service and for his trailblazing path for me and my colleagues who joined the police department in the 80s and the 90s. I can't imagine what it was like for him and the few African-Americans who joined this police department at that time and trying to have your culture represented. I know how difficult it was for me in the 90s, for those, the officers who joined in the 80s and some of the struggles that we had. So really thankful for his life. And again, my condolences to his family.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Dabala?
Hi, everybody. Anne? Okay, thank you. A couple of things. First, with respect to state legislation and money about for people with disabilities. So I think that Ms. Seacott mentioned that the city had put in testimony on a bill to allow folks with physical, with unseen disabilities and mental disabilities to have a marker on their license, so, or their ID. So we have done that. That came up at a PASNA meeting that I was at last week. As did the money for the disabilities program in the governor's budget, as did a bill HB 502, which creates an office of disabilities in workforce at the state level. So those are three things that we are tracking and that I'm, we're making the residents who are members of PASNA aware of. So I wanted to say that. I wanted to say that I did really enjoy the Zoom with the PASNA folks and listening to some of the creative ideas you guys have about how to move forward in, with your personal challenges in your families. I also wanted to thank the Eagle Scouts for inviting me to their ceremony on Sunday. There are a total of six. There were, there are a total of six Eagle Scouts this year out of Troop 33. Four were honored this Sunday and two more will be honored in a few weeks. And I thought that was all pretty awesome because each one of them does a community project that helps our, helps our residents and helps our community. And I think the two other things on my list were, were mentioned that I'll be testifying on, on the renewed legislation for climate resiliency tomorrow in the Senate Economic and Environment Committee and that there's a D 20, District 20 night in Annapolis on Monday night. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dybala. Councilmember Westlake?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to just say two things. One, thank you for your comments. I think it's a really interesting idea about trying to have the dark night. It immediately made me think of two common bedtime books that I read with my daughter. Both with spoiler, with endings of kind of an appreciation for the night sky, being able to see all the stars. So I think there might, if we do something like that, there could be a lot of tie-in with kids. And second, this morning, I participated in a meeting of the board of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, which I'm excited that next week they'll be presenting here. And I, I just wanted to give a shout out to Javier and his, his team now with Calista and Rachel that they're really doing some fantastic work to try to support and lift up the businesses at the Tacoma Langley Crossroads area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Westlake. Councilmember Landman?
A couple of things I wanted to say. First, let me thank the many volunteer snow shovelers that I saw reporting their activities on the listserv this morning. And there are a lot of residents who really appreciated that, and I did too. I wanted to also thank Renata, our Ward 1 Dark Sky Advocate for your idea. And I think the timing would work very well to combine with our planned celebration of the paying off of the community center, which I believe falls right around the same week. So maybe we can have a little joint celebration, light a candle for that and then turn out the lights for appreciating Dark Sky Night. Let me draw everyone's attention to a performance tomorrow night. The National Symphony Orchestra is sending its players to Tacoma Park. They'll be performing a free concert at 7 o'clock at the Sligo SDA Church at 7,700 Carroll, right, I think, within our border. And they're going to raise the roof with some beautiful classical music. It's free and it's right here in our neighborhood. And the last thing I'll say is that Councilmember Dybala and I participated today in a conference call with the National League of Cities about all of the different legislative activities that they're following on behalf of cities on Capitol Hill and with the executive branch. And I mean, the list of different areas in which our resources and our way of life are going to be and have already been significantly affected was as long as your arm. And so we really have our work put out for us. And I'm grateful that we have the National League of Cities to help guide us. But we are going to maybe be calling on citizens to join with us in writing to representatives and senators to focus on programs that are very important to us and that have a federal component. So keep your eyes peeled for word from your city council members on those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Honza?
I think, thank you. Thank you to our night sky representative. I haven't heard about that idea, but I, I love the stars. I, I guess I'll just tell you, my, I think it sounds like a great idea. I can see that one of the things we would, one of the challenges we would face would be related to just public safety and making sure that we're feeling like our city is safe. So, you know, assuming that's not too difficult to overcome, but something to definitely be dealt with. And let's see, I'll, I'll just run through my list. Thank you, Councilmember Landman. I was going to mention the NSO because it's right in, in my part of the city and, and they've had some great concerts there. And this one, I got to see an NSA concert there, I think, last year. And it was just, it was just out of this world. Blew me away.
I forgot to mention the starting time. Maybe you could do that.
Oh, yes. It is 7:00 PM. But please, please come out. I don't see people there often enough for the incredible music. It's a really great space too. And you can walk. Also, I attended a kickoff meeting this week for the Enough Grant. And if people haven't heard about that, Cheer is, Cheer is one of our local organizations. They have gathered, I think, more than 20 or 40 different stakeholders around our local region to really focus on the wellness of, of our children, all the way up through our families and our community. And I'm grateful to the city for having helped support them. We aren't going to, I don't think there's direct money coming into the city per se, but it is coming right into organizing and preparing for the future around this area that's growing and changing so very rapidly. So I was grateful to, to be there for that. And I also was able to attend a Long Branch Business League meeting this week. And like you, Amy, Councilmember Westlake, excuse me, I, I also just think they're doing amazing work. And I'm, I'm so eager to see if we can expand that business league to other businesses all around the area. But in particular, I just want to applaud one of the members of the league who was working extremely hard, hand in hand with our city and our mayor, on making sure our small businesses are prepared for the things to come, including immigration-related issues. And I assume that someone else is going to talk about Play Day this weekend. Yes? Okay, okay, I'm going to skip over that. Thank you, Councilmember Dybala, for joining our Eagle Scouts. In particular, if there was anyone else there that I missed, my son happens to have been one of those Eagle Scouts. So I'm a proud mom as well as a proud Tacoma Parkan, recognizing those Scouts. And, and, and now I want to address something a little bit more sensitive. And I'm going to go ahead and, and look over at my colleague so he knows that I'm saying this in good faith because I really appreciate what happened afterwards. But I, I will say I got a little riled up, and I haven't shared this with you. I got a little riled up at last week's meeting when you shared, oh, can I, can I have 30 more seconds, maybe? Thank you. Or one minute. Thank you. I, my council, my fellow councilmember said about sidewalks, perceptions are reality. I don't know if you remember saying that. And I know, I think what you meant. I think that the intention was to talk about the validity of people's emotional response to their safety. I feel the same way about my own children on our own street. But the reason why the comment really got to me is, in the current context right now, that kind of language is, is really not what I want to hear us saying. And I, again, maybe, maybe you'd take those words back, thinking on it differently. But I think it's just really, really, really important when we talk about things like sidewalks that we're thinking about equity across the city. And so while you might feel like there's really fast traffic on your street, you don't necessarily know the reality across the rest of the city and how our city's resources need to be allocated to be equitable. And I say this as a member of Ward 5. And I want to now acknowledge my councilmember, who I didn't make this comment to him. And yet, of his own volition, he reached out to me and said, hey, Councilmember Honza, I just wanted you to know that I'm here for you to take a look at the data with you in Ward 5 and see what's needed. And thank you. So I, I think, but I, but I did want to just point out those words because I think that's been some of the longstanding friction in our city about what happens with traffic calming and investments that our city makes in where we put speed bumps, where we invest our dollars. And, and I just want to invite all my colleagues to bear all that in mind as we go into budget season. And if we can try to take a really hard look at the data and revisit what we think we need to do and what people are asking us for and have the courage to sometimes say, hey, this shouldn't be our priority. We need to put our dollars elsewhere, even if you feel frustrated. And I, and I know that's not going to be easy. So I hope, I hope that was well heard and that, that you don't feel upset by my words. But I, I just needed to say that out loud and, and I thank you for your follow-up this week.
Thank you, Councilmember Honza. Councilmember Sligle?
Thank you. Well, I, I didn't expect to start with this, but thank you, Councilmember Honza. I'll just say that my, I think I'm completely aligned with what you're saying. And I, I'm sorry if it came across differently. At the end of what you just said, you, you said that if you had to say no, you implied that we have to say no to certain residents who really care about something. We should validate that their perception matters and that they're feeling something.
Yeah.
That's one of the points I was making. And the larger point I was making last week was that when we look at data, for example, if we look at crash data, we may not see any crashes. And thus, we might think, oh, Roanoke Avenue, I'm going to mention Ward 5, doesn't need anything. But the point that a resident had made in the community meeting was that when you have behaviors that are no longer even attempted because of a perception of a lack of safety, you may not see pedestrian vehicle conflicts. You may not see things like that. But people are just too scared to do it. So my 100% top priority is equity when it comes to this sidewalk and traffic calming in, in decisions that will be coming up. I just want you to, I want you and everyone to know that. I want to thank Renata McAdams, who I know outside of the city council, for the suggestion of Dark Skies Night in April. And on a personal note, I come from a family where stargazing is a cherished activity. And we're always reminding each other to go out and check and planets are aligning and stuff. So I'm really interested in your idea. And I see the benefits for sheer enjoyment, as well as for raising our awareness about nighttime lighting, which is something that, after all, we choose to do and we can choose to do differently. So, and I'll just mention that right now in Tacoma Park proper, I think the best place, if you want to do stargazing, is down in the meadow downhill behind the middle school, like beyond the skate park. But the trees kind of box in what you can see. Thanks to my colleagues serving on the working group on legislative affairs. I just can't imagine what a heavy lift it is at this period of the General Assembly, and I really appreciate that work. I, I'm having office hours twice this week. On Friday, 4:30 to 5:30 PM at Tacoma Bevco. If you get there ready at 5:30, I'll stick around. So it's not like, you know, I'm going to bug out. And then also on Saturday morning, on New Hampshire Avenue at DeRay Coffee, I will be there from 9:30 to 10:30. So please stop by. And I'm particularly interested to hear from residents who are being affected by the recent slew of federal actions for workers and contracted workers. Just a couple of reminders. The Boyd Avenue Alley informational meeting is this Thursday, tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. And you can participate. It's on Zoom. Email me if you haven't gotten an update about that. I'm at roger s@tacomaparkmd.gov. Also looking forward to a community meeting that Chief DeVal is helping to organize soon at Victory Tower to address residents' concerns about security and safety. And I'm also grateful to Captain Tracy Lieberman of the Montgomery Parks Police, who has offered to be involved with Pine Crest and Circle Woods residents in looking, looking into things that may be happening in the two MNCPC parks in that area, the Big Woods, as well as Slagametal Overlook Park. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sligle. Okay, it's my turn. I want to thank everyone that provided comments this evening. Mary Jane Mchuey, really thank you so much. And the members of PASNA for your continued advocacy for individuals with disabilities. One of my nephews has autism. So it is really, really, really important for me as well to make sure that we're supporting at all levels of government, ways to address the needs of our youth and particularly adults, young adults that are, that are suffering from various disabilities. So I appreciate everyone's continued advocacy. And as Councilmember Dybala mentioned, we submitted testimony regarding Eric's Law and are definitely continuing to mine all the plethora, the slew of, of bills that are coming out of Annapolis for, for ways in which we can continue to advocate on behalf of our, our residents in the city. Thank you so much for your idea around dark skies. I think it's, it's a really interesting idea. The city has and is planning a number of events during Earth Day already. But definitely want to encourage, if you organize something, to please just let us know. And we can definitely work together as relates to, using our platforms to, to promote. The, there's a lot of stuff that's been going on. Forgive me because it's taking me a minute. Last week, two testimonies. So testified in Annapolis, as was mentioned, on the restricted covenants bill. So we testified on that. Fingers crossed it will keep moving. Also testified before the Montgomery County Council regarding the CIP amendment that was going forward for the 2025 to 2030 CIP, which included Piney Branch Elementary. And so Piney Branch now has in the CIP, and that was included in the 2025, a feasibility study for the, for the elementary school for the improvements or expansion, construction expansion there. And so we are, it's good. It's still there. My, my goal is to make sure it stays there. And so also asking for additional resources for the school as it relates to HVAC and other operation improvements. We also met, I want to thank our city staff that have been working a lot as it relates to preparing and sharing information regarding immigration, immigration laws and just convening not only staff, but also our, our principals. So Councilmember Honza and I had an opportunity to chat with a number of principals locally to learn more about some of the things that they may need or that they are doing to educate their families around know your rights. And also if there are things that we can do as a city to support them. So I appreciate Chief DeVal and our communications manager, Ryan Kelly, for, for all of the work that they continue to do in prep. This week, Sunday, Sunday, Sunday is the annual Midwinter Play Day. I will be there. I am blanking on the game that I have agreed to play, but I will be playing something. So I want to encourage people to come out and to participate in the Play Day. It will be at Piney Branch Elementary, and I believe it starts at, at 1:00 PM. Also, on Monday, I want to thank St. John's College. I will be leading a panel during the 2025 Maryland Civic Education Summit. And so the panel that I will be facilitating is showcasing youth service pathways. So I want to thank the organizers of that event for inviting me to participate. I'll also be at the District 20 Night in Annapolis. So look forward to seeing folks there. And also on Thursday, I will be attending the Youth Council meeting on the 20th. So I'm super excited to have an opportunity to sit down and chat with our Youth Council. So with that, I will turn things over to our city manager, Mr. Espirito, for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council and our guests. From the Housing and Community Development Department, the city is launching a tenant renters insurance rebate program. Program provides a one-time rebate to low-income renters who purchase at least six months of renters insurance. You can find out more about the program on the city's website. A link will be provided in the posted city manager comments. In celebration of Black History Month, five powerhouse black artists will perform in Alannan Hughes, an unforgettable evening of storytelling and expression celebrating the rich tapestry of black experiences. Featured poets from Have a Voice Entertainment include Nerd the Poet, DJ Art Is, Poetic Soul, Miko Reed, and Stan Kells. The group has performed at the National Museum of African American History, the Woolly Mammoth Theater, Arena Stage, Atlas Performing Arts Center, and other venues. The performance will begin at 7:30 PM at the community center on Friday, February 21st. From the police department, Purple Line Road Access Alerts. From the Police Department, Purple Line Road Access Alerts. On or about February 17th, crews will reduce Stewart Avenue to one lane, starting at Brookville Road with alternating traffic for approximately three months. Parking on Stewart Avenue will be limited. This closure is necessary for track placement to cross Stewart Avenue. And on or about February 27th, Riggs Road will be limited to right turns only at the intersection with University Boulevard, MD 193, for approximately four weeks. Crews will establish a work zone in the center of the University Boulevard intersection to facilitate track and utility installation. The pedestrian crossing of University Boulevard will remain at Riggs Road. Additional signage will be in place to direct drivers to use the advanced detour routes to minimize the number of vehicles at this University Boulevard intersection. From the Recreation Department, summer camp registration begins at noon next Wednesday, February 19th, for Tacoma Park residents and Wednesday, February 26th, for non-residents. Please check out this summer's camp offerings in the camp guide on the city's website or pick up a guide at the Community Center, Recreation Center on Recre on New Hampshire Avenue or the Temporary Library on New Hampshire Avenue. A link will be included in tomorrow's posted city manager comments. From the city manager's office, a shout out from the Communication Department. I'd like to shout out recognized Angelica Watts, the city's webmaster, for her incredible hard work and dedication while getting the new website to a level where we not only felt ready, but also proud to share the work with the Tacoma Park community. We appreciate her continuing work since the launch, addressing resident and employee questions and concerns as we continue to work to improve the site for all. And finally, a staff shout out from the Housing and Community Development Department. Thank you to Casey Anne Webley for her fantastic work putting together the community meeting on sidewalk and traffic calming proposals. We collected many great comments and her work to organize and develop the meeting materials was quite invaluable. That concludes my report.
Wonderful. Well, both are very deserving. I am in love with the, the new website and that I actually tested out the function where you can translate every page into whatever language you could ever imagine in life. It's beautiful. If you haven't tried it, try it, it's awesome. I can't validate whether or not it's correct, but it is awesome to be able to see in real time. So with that, I'm going to move to our voting session. First item is the Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing Execution of a Contract for Stormwater System Cleaning and Video Inspection Services. Would someone like to move it?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember DeValle. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Westlech. Are there any points of discussion? Just want to check with our city management team to see whether or not there are any points of discussion or if there are any questions on council before we move to the vote. Okay, seeing none. Given that this is an ordinance, we'll call the roll. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Landman.
Aye.
Councilmember DeValle.
Aye.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak.
Aye.
Councilmember Westlech.
Aye.
Mayor Cersei.
Aye.
Next item, Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing Extension of a Contract with NZI Construction for Street Sidewalk and Stormwater Construction. Would someone like to move it?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Westlech moves. Councilmember Hansak seconds. Just want to check with the staff, are there any points of discussion? Seeing none. Any questions from the councils? Seeing none. Councilmember Schlegel.
Just for public awareness, I had asked a few questions about this today and, and thank you to Director Braithwaite for the answers to the questions. I, I had been asking about how these contracts operate and I think it might be helpful for residents to know that these contracts for stormwater installations, sidewalks and repaving of streets, resurfacing of streets, they are on, on an as-done basis. So the payments go to the company as the work is completed and you won't see much work going on this time of year because of the weather. But I also found it helpful to know that because this, this contract, this payment is using ARPA funds, if I understand correctly, it makes sense from an accounting standpoint to extend this contract just for a few more months. And it's not, it's not adding any additional work that it wasn't always, that wasn't already budgeted for.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Landman.
Aye.
Councilmember DeValle.
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak.
Aye.
Councilmember Westlech.
Aye.
Mayor Cersei.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move into our presentations. Let me just do a quick time check and we're looking pretty good. Item up for this, for, for us is the presentation on the Capital Improvement Program or CIP, the Equipment Replacement Reserve, Fleet Review and Street Maintenance. Director Chung is joining us.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember. Tonight, my colleague, Public Work Director Daryl Braithwaite, and I will be presenting, we're making a presentation called Capital Planning and Policy. And I will start the presentation to talk about the Capital Improvement Program and the Equipment Replacement Reserve Program. And then Director Braithwaite will talk about the other two subjects, which is the Fleet Replacement Administrative Policy as well as the Street Resurfacing Program. Okay? For Capital Improvement Program, we call CIP. CIP is a five-year plan for major purchases and projects. Many of the projects are multi-year efforts or regular equipment replacement or infrastructure. Each year, the capital improvement budget covers the following six categories. Information and communication technology that usually cover items like computer server, surveillance system and et cetera. And we also have Equipment Replacement Reserve. ERR is a subcategory of CIP and is funded by a separate reserve. Park Improvement, the most recent park program includes the Sligo Mill Overlook and the Spring Park Improvement. Infrastructure Improvement include sidewalks and street rehabilitation. Building Maintenance Improvement include, for example, the police station improvement and the third floor renovation. Stormwater project include some Sligo Mill there and, and project at Gottlin. So these are the examples of the project we have in fiscal year 25. The other topic that I would like to discuss is Equipment Replacement Reserve. Each year, the city budget for equipment replacement, setting money aside to replace the assets with lifespan from three years to 30 years. Three years program may include something like computer, just a laptop computer. Thirty years program may include some infrastructure program, for example, the streets and some major construction project and including some machinery as well as vehicles. The city maintain a list of cover items with an estimated useful life and replacement cost calculation. The finance staff maintain an ERR spreadsheet, Equipment Replacement Spreadsheet that cover for 50 years, include the next replacement of each item by year, the projected replacement cost, existing balance, either reserve for each item, the recommended annual contribution, the interest rate estimate. And the city manager usually recommends an annual contribution amount to maintain the adequate balance in the reserve. What is Capital Improvement Program? Capital Improvement include major infrastructure projects and equipment replacement that exceed a threshold amount. The threshold amount now we're using is any item over $5,000. But the purpose is to ensure that the long-term planning and fiscal responsibility for the city infrastructure and asset. And it is currently a five-year planning document that we always have that displayed in our budget document. CIP are developed with the department head's recommendation. The programs are reviewed and approved by the city manager to ensure compliance and budget requirement each fiscal year by balancing or reconciling the budget. And during the budget review, the city manager may propose reduction in certain capital program to mitigate any major budget deficit. Talking about the funding sources for CIP. CIP items in the general fund include four different funding sources. The first one is our unassigned reserve. We have about $10 million in our unassigned reserve as of fiscal year end, fiscal year end 2024. Library Bond Reserve, which will be exhausted by fiscal year 25. Equipment Replacement Reserve, currently we have about $4.37 million as of fiscal year 24. And Facility Maintenance Reserve, currently we have the balance about $434,000. And we also have other funds that include the ARPA Fund. The Treasury Final Rule, the obligatory funds must be expended by December 31st, 2026. And currently we have about a little bit less than $10 million in our ARPA Fund. Red Light Camera Fund and also the Speed Camera Fund.
Excuse me, but just for the benefit of people watching from home, could the slide projected be the one that you're discussing? Thank you.
And then we also have the Revenue, Special Revenue Fund. And the Special Revenue Fund, we have a reserve balance about $3.6 million and 2.5 million is designated for the library construction. Stormwater Fund is, fund balance right now is $355,000. For the 2025 Capital Improvement Review, these are the list of the key projects planned for FY25. The first one is the trash truck purchase and is funded by ERR. The purchase amount is $630,000. City sidewalk, including the ADA and also the new sidewalk, that is about $733,000, is funded by ARPA. Street Rehabilitation, the purchase amount is about $650,000 funded by ARPA. Traffic Calming and pedestrian safety, $100,000 funded by ARPA. HVAC Control System, $137,000 is funded by ERR. Metropolitan Branch Trail, $72,000 funded by the grant fund in the Special Revenue Fund. And the matching fund is from the ARPA Fund, which is about $18,000. Library and Community Center redevelopment totaling $9.1 million and is funded by various reserves. The first one is our Bond Reserve. We issue a bond, an infrastructure bond in 2017 and that bond money is going to be completely exhausted by 2025. And we also are going to use the Special Revenue Cable Grant Reserve as well as the ARPA Fund. The project, the projected expenditure by source, which is, you can see from the table below. General Fund expenditure is about $4 million that include ERR, FMR, Facility Maintenance Reserve and bond. ARPA is about $6.4 million expenditure. Red Light Camera Project is about $120,000. Special Revenue Grant Project is about $3.5 million. Stormwater Capital Project is about $230,000. Contribution to Capital Improvement Reserve. The General Fund Contribution. Contribution from ERR, from the ERR and Facility Maintenance Reserve are made from the General Fund Unassigned Reserve. Annual contribution are based on current year expenditure needs, the city manager's recommendation, as well as the available fund in our unassigned reserve during the budget process. Other fund contributions include expenditure level depend on the availability of the individual fund balance. Special Revenue Cable Grant Reserve funded by the city obtained grants. Stormwater Fund Balance is funded by the annual stormwater fees. And the Speed and Red Light Camera Fund is funded by the traffic violation fines. So these are the funding source and contributions. The impact of defer maintenance and delay purchases. We have safety concerns if there, if, if the purchases are delayed or the maintenance are being deferred. The safety concern include delaying police vehicle and equipment purchase. And that could result in compromising public and officer's safety. Delay the road maintenance and sidewalk repair could result in degraded condition and higher cost for repairs. And there is also financial impact. Higher costs in future years due to inflation, increased maintenance expense, particularly for aging police vehicles. Next, we're going to talk about the Equipment Replacement Reserve. And I'm going to go give an overview of the concept and rationale. This program is established under Section 804 in the city's code. The purpose of this program is to maintain funds to replace major capital items with purchase price equal to greater than 0.5% of the total budget revenues. To ensure the reserves are sufficient to replace cover items over their useful life. Annual budget will allocate payments to reserve based on the item's purchase price and estimated useful life. When replacements are needed, funds will be drawn from the reserve and additional contribution may be required if the reserve is insufficient. The charter also requires us to maintain a public list of cover items with estimated useful life of the replacement cost that include expenditures, contribution in annual budget. The city manager usually make recommendation and the council will approve the annual contribution to the Equipment Replacement Reserve during the budget process. And we are talking about next is the ERR Contribution and funding health. The General Fund Contribution, annual contribution is based on current year expenditure and unassigned reserve. Annual contribution is based on current year expenditure and unassigned reserve availability. Our financial consultant, Rev Talis. Made a recommendation last time that about nine hundred thousand to one million dollar annually would be sufficient. At that time. And as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, the annual reserve balance is about four point three seven million in the E R R. For the reconciliation of our E R R in twenty twenty four. The current contribution now in F Y twenty four was five hundred and fifty thousand. That level of contribution only cover up to. The annual allocation costs up to fiscal year twenty seven. So from fiscal year twenty four to fiscal year twenty seven is about three to four years time. For that amount contribution of five hundred and fifty thousand. Key consideration, so delay or inadequate annual contribution increase the risk. And of the insufficient fund for the future replacement. So we need to make consideration every time during the budget. To try to contribute at a adequate amount to our equipment replacement reserve. So that complete my presentation on capital improvement project as well as E R. And then my colleague. Director Braithwaite will continue with the other two presentation.
Good evening, fleet replacement, I think the purpose here tonight is just to give you all an overview of how the city considers fleet replacement. There is administrative procedures that we follow that were established in two thousand seventeen. Prior to that, we had a process, but we formalized it with a charter agreement and detailed evaluation of the steps that we go through. So in addition to having a fleet replacement policy. One of the key critical factors is it establishes a fleet review committee that's composed of the public works director, the vehicle maintenance supervisor, the finance director. A police captain and the deputy city manager. And that review committee meets prior to the development of the annual budget to review which vehicles. Should be considered for inclusion in the equipment placement reserve. And then the recommended list from those discussions is provided to the city manager. We also meet prior to the start of the fiscal year to make sure that those vehicles that we put forward for the budget and were included. By council are still the appropriate ones for the, for the actual purchase process. So there's a formal review that happens twice. Among the things that we're reviewing, we have a number of criteria that are established in the, in the process. So we look at age of the vehicle, we look at mileage and we look at historical maintenance costs. And, and the next slide, I'll show you the table that we use to establish those criteria thresholds. And for each of the criteria, it's a word of the point, you have to have at least three points in order to be considered for vehicle replacement. We also have a category of conditional points that can be applied. For factors that could negatively impact vehicle condition that's primarily used for things like accidents. Particularly with a police car, what the police car has been in an accident, it's not the same vehicle. As was previously largely due to the speed and rate of, rate of impact. The fleet replacement administrative policy was also included as attachment to the cover sheet. So if anybody wants to see the full four or five page document, that's available for you and is posted on the city's website. As you can see in that chart below, the evaluation spreadsheet. The criteria that we use for various different kinds of vehicles is outlined there, police have a eight year or a hundred thousand mile initial. Criteria for, for mileage and then a criteria for the annual maintenance amounts and the conditional points. Department administrative vehicles have a longer life expectancy, ten years and a hundred and fifty thousand miles. And then you see some of the heavy duty like trash trucks and special equipment is assessed annually. In the process of the budget, for those of you that are new to it. We will be providing our Excel spreadsheet for the vehicles that we went through this criteria evaluation with. So it will include, you know, big, be a big sheet of paper with any vehicle that we're considering for replacement. It'll list the age, it'll list the mileage, it'll list, we've expanded it in the past year to. Include more than the last year of maintenance costs. So we now are showing three years of maintenance costs so we can look for trends. And we've also added a category for both the outside maintenance as well as the in-house maintenance. So we now. Combine those two together. In the past, we were primarily just looking at outside maintenance costs. And then whether or not the vehicle's been in an accident and the cost for repair those accidents. So you can. See the ones that cost a couple thousand dollars versus the ones that cost eight or nine thousand dollars. Obviously is a reflection of the seriousness of the accident the vehicle was involved in. So that's pretty much a nutshell of the fleet replacement policy and the criteria. Moving on to the street resurfacing program. We have in the past done a whole broad PowerPoint presentation about this and happy to provide prior evaluations. To give you more detail, especially for those council members that are new. But our street resurfacing program was established in earnest in two thousand four. And back then, a little more than twenty years ago, city roadways were in pretty deplorable condition and it was a concern that the council and mayor and particularly heard a lot about. So the city brought in an engineering consultant firm and did a whole evaluation. Not only of roadway conditions, which back in those days, twenty plus years ago, there were actually a cadre of engineers who walked every street with clipboards and. Counted hatch marks on various aspects. Thankfully now it's all been automated and so you see that little, almost like a Google map. Van drives down the street, it's got infrared technology beneath it, there's six different cameras. And it records data on the street, it's as it's passing over it, that data gets evaluated. And it ends up giving us what we ultimately receive as a pavement condition report. So with that pavement condition report, we have a best to worst list of our streets, it's a hundred point rating system. I've got their examples of kind of what the rates break out into. And every five or seven years, we. We have this pavement condition report done. We did it in two thousand three, prior to the establishment of the program, two thousand eleven, two thousand sixteen. And two thousand twenty one. So we're getting ready to look at companies to offer it again. So we are looking forward to that. One of the interesting things that's been improved, just as a sidebar, is that the technology is getting so much better. So we may actually be able to do roadway signage, pavement marking. And potentially sidewalk condition evaluation with the type of technology that we're using. Obviously, the van doesn't drive on the sidewalk, but they do have this little, little remote, little remote thing that rides along the sidewalk. So. We'll be exploring that and if it's cost competitive and something we feel we can afford. We certainly would value that level of citywide. One time, you know, picture for all, and you really are able to compare streets amongst themselves. Particularly when you're making challenging budget decisions. You want to make sure that you've got the full picture of what you're evaluating and rank things accordingly. See. This is a little bit more information about the, the things that are included in the evaluation criteria. Sorry, there's a bar across mine which blocks out some of the words. So amongst the things that we consider, in addition to the pavement condition, the pavement condition is kind of the primary. Tool that we use, but we're also looking at the existing funding availability and that's an amount that's set by the council annually. With physical considerations, we try to cluster work together. So that our contractor can move easily from one to the next, we can optimize efficiency. Reduce some of the mobilization cost if we were coming and doing one block and then having to move across the city to set up to do another block. It's just not a, nobody wants to work that way. So we try to group it together. So sometimes we may be doing better or worse streets, but we're trying to cluster them where they're. Most in need. And then we also, in looking at the evaluation and the pavement condition report. Particularly those that have been done, you know, two or three or four years ago. We try to factor in some of the high traffic volumes that might accelerate deterioration. So, you know, a street that's a cul-de-sac that may be rated fair. And a street that's a heavy, heavy used street that's rated fair, we know in two or three years that the condition of the one that's heavily used is going to deteriorate much faster than the. Less used one. So we try to use some logic there in terms of. Using the information and making decisions as we go. And then we also try to make sure that we are working around the utilities or other city projects. The last thing you want is to have paved a street. And then the utility company says, oh, by the way, we're coming in and they tear up your street. We now have an arrangement with the utilities, which has been in place for several years where if they do that. They, they then pave the street curb to curb. So the city does require in our permit process for a utility company make, do it a major water main replacement or a major. Gas line replacement, they can't just patch the center of the road where they excavated and replaced their line, they have to resurface curb to curb. That said, they don't deal with any of the other potential defects like gutter pans and curb lines and things like that. So. One of the things we've been doing the past few years is going in and you'll see that reflected in some of the more recent data, we go in and. Improve, do base repair work, improve curbing gutter so that when they come in and do their resurfacing. We've got the road in the kind of condition we would do it if we were doing it ourselves. So it's been a very successful way to do that. I wanted to point out that chart below it, and I encourage you to look at it on your own time. But what I take away from this evaluation, it shows a comparative our ratings. Across the years that we've done the ratings. And again, our, our goal is to have streets in fair or better condition throughout the city. So what you can see when you look at that is it's working. If you look down at the evaluation done in twenty twenty two, there were no streets rated failed, there were no streets rated very poor. There were no streets rated poor. So to me, that's a criteria of one of the ways that we can look at our program. And say, is it accomplishing its goals? And I think from data like this, you can say, yes, it is. I'll go into a little bit more detail about some of the nuances. One of the things that you can see there is the time between two thousand three and two thousand eleven is a bit longer time span than the other two. Which can also be a reflection of, of deterioration of road quality. We have this map available, thanks to our construction manager and his whiz, whiz dangatry at. G I S. So we've got a, it's hard to see at, at this level, but he's put together a map that. Shows from the streets that haven't been done yet, pre two thousand four, and then by year where streets were done. And you can see the slightly different notation shows those that where W S S C went in. So we had. Massive resurfacing that was done in Ward six as a result of two thousand and fifteen W S S C project. And also areas in two thousand seventeen in Ward three. Where W S S C came in after doing water main work and replacing the roadways. And that's pretty, a pretty substantial amount of space that they've covered. There are a little over thirty three miles of city maintained streets. In the program since two thousand four, we've resurfaced about twenty nine of those miles. Important to note here, five and a half of those miles were done by W S S C at no cost to the city. In terms of the resurfacing itself. Had the city done that work, it would have cost us over a million dollars to, to, for those two years where they did significant resurfacing. And about four and a half miles of the city were resurfaced prior to two thousand four and have not yet been done. I also wanted to show a bit about our spending levels to try to see, you know, sort of how this is, how we're meeting our goals. We, we can see based on some of our pavement condition information that up until two thousand eighteen. We were reaching our goal of no roads and worse than fair condition. It'll be very interesting to see the next time around, whether or not we're still are. You know, meeting, meeting the goals of the program. When the program was established, in addition to wanting streets in fair and better condition. We also set an annual funding level of five hundred thousand dollars a year. You can see based on a quick look at those, those chart numbers, we haven't quite been making the. The funding level goals. In the first few years, we spent significant amounts of money and I want to point out at that point in time. We had both state and county revitalization grants. Some of the after effect of. Sections of, that were in Prince George's County coming into Montgomery County. So we were successful in getting funding and a lot of that went to. Roadway improvements, which were in a very deteriorated state. Particularly in the Ward three area. We have also used in the past, a community development broad current funds for some roadway work, very specific roadway work. We use the capital budget, which is our, you'll see when, when you look at the capital budget, there's an allocation for street resurfacing. Again, we've also had a restoration fund through W S S C. In the way distant past, W S S C actually split costs with us fifty fifty. So they would. We would tell them how much the street was going to cost to resurface after they did their water main work and they'd pay us half, we'd put it in a fund. And then when we. Actually did pave that street, we use those funds. So we're slowly working our way through the W S S C restoration fund monies. Some years we've, we've used them when we're doing those streets that they were allocated for. We also from time to time will use the city engineer's budget, which is not in the capital budget, but a separate line item. Where we have subcontract work. And then most recently, ARPA funds have contributed a significant amount. So as you can see there, the average that we're spending is. About four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars a year, which is pretty close to that five hundred thousand dollar goal. However, one of the things we have not done since we established the program in two thousand four is. Adjusted based on inflation and new costs. So I put together a little chart to show a bit about what the impact of that is. So our roadway work is typically done in a five year contract basis. We have a three year contract and then two one year extensions. We do it through what we call indefinite quantities. So we bid out a list of items, curb and gutter, sidewalk. Milling one inch to two and a half inch. And the various contractors who bid on the job, bid it at a unit rate. So how many square yards, what's the price, how many cubic feet, whatever it is. And so that's how we evaluate. The competitive bids and then we make a selection based on who we think has provided the most effective and. Cost categories since two thousand and five. And up till our most recent contract adjustment, which was done in two thousand twenty two. And that was largely as a result of COVID, just increasing the cost of asphalt and concrete significantly. But you can see there, we've had, you know, between ninety and over a hundred percent increases in the cost of those basic things. Our actual contract unit prices, there's, it's a three page sheet, we have lots and lots of individual items, but these are some of the. Particular ones that impact us when we're talking about roadway work. So as you can see. The cost for milling, which is where you remove that surface layer of old asphalt, has gone up a hundred and thirty one percent. From two and a half dollars a cubic yard to almost six, five dollars and seventy eight cents. Resurfacing, which is actually reapplying the asphalt, hasn't had that, that same level of increase, it's increased thirty four percent. And then you see there in the next category, excuse me. Some of the concrete, concrete items, the curb and gutter and the sidewalk and new sidewalk has all had a ninety three to ninety six percent cost increase. And speed humps, again, something we all know about, it's gone from, you know, basically a hundred, hundred percent cost increase from that time. Let me get my water. Sorry about that. And then lastly, just some considerations I wanted to review, particularly as we're going into budget time. Is, as I've mentioned, the paving costs have increased significantly since we first established the program. And the original goals were to keep streets in fair, better condition. We assumed a twenty year lifespan for most streets, obviously some would be less and some would be more. With an annual funding target of half a million dollars. And as I showed you, we believe the city has been able to meet that goal of no streets below fair condition. Based on the most recent street condition evaluation. fair condition, based on the most recent street condition evaluation. Utility resurfacing as a result of system replacement provided a significant amount of road resurfacing. Had that not occurred, I, I think the data would be fairly, fairly different. We would have roads in failed and poorer condition, but because WSSC has done, you know, five and a half miles of our 33 and a half miles, a pretty significant percentage, we've sort of been able to skip ahead in a ways that we wouldn't otherwise. I think we can also assume while there will be some more system replacement, the, the large utility replacement programs have been pretty much done in our city. Those of you who were here in 2010 through 2020, and we had entire neighborhoods being worked on for utilities. So WSSC has come in and replaced pretty much all the old water lines. Washington Gas still has a few low pressure systems that they intend to replace, but they are, they have moved their way through the city. So I don't think we can continue to see that level of assistance, shall I say, with road resurfacing. I think there will be, you know, some occasional roadway work. And I just want to digress a bit, you know, water main breaks, they've been a, a big area of concern lately, particularly in Ward five and Ward six, where we've had, you know, roads just blow out. And when you have a water main break like that, it really undermines the subsurface of the road, which is really a critical piece of longevity for roads. If you don't have a good base, your road is not going to last. So in those cases, the utility company is responsible for restoring the base and restoring the roadway. Sometimes it takes quite a while because the first work they do is to stop the break, right? So they'll dig it up, they'll fix the break and they'll put a bunch of temporary backfill in it, throw a little asphalt on top and they're on their way. And then that patch, of course, fails pretty quickly and they're required to maintain that patch until it's, the pavement is restored. So they do, they are required to come back out and people will watch this and think this doesn't make any sense because they will dig up all the backfill that they put in because it was not, not degrade, not to meet the compaction. It's an entirely different crew that does that type of restoration. They'll refill it, compact it in levels, do the asphalt work and mill and pave a section far bigger than that actual break itself. So they will get restored. It just oftentimes takes longer than we would like to get that work done. Let's see, the early years of the program, when we saw those, you know, million, million and a half and more levels of funding, we took on some of our worst streets then. Again, just like the utilities are not likely to come back through in the same kind of way. We've now got roadway base conditions at a much better level than we did 20 years ago. So some of the roads that really had absolutely no base beneath the surface of asphalt, they were really poorly built to begin with. We've gone in and we milled six inches, we replaced the base, we put surface level off. So we, we have been able to take care of those in the initial parts of the program, which is really critical for roadway longevity. One of the ways we identified that at the time, part of that initial engineering evaluation is we took a core of every street, every block. So we knew what the, what the strata and the subsurface was of the pavement. So those that didn't have a base or had inappropriate soils at the base, we were able to identify, put them on a list, and then we did the major reconstruction work that was required. So that's a bit of the good news. We now feel like all our streets have a decent base. We, of course, there'll be aberrations and things fail. A lot of subsurface water can undermine a roadway base. So we'll still be doing base repair, but nothing to the level that we did in the first few years of the program. So looking at what we've done so far, how far we've gotten, and how we feel about the current state of our roadways, we believe that we're really meeting more of a 25-year life cycle rather than the 20-year life cycle based on our funding, which in and of itself is not particularly problematic. But the general, general rule of thumb for roadway engineering is you're really pushing your pavement if you're expecting it to last longer than 20 years. So I still think as a policy and program, we should be aiming to reach that 20-year life cycle. But at this point, we've extended beyond. So as a result of that, and in looking at the increasing costs of our roadway work, it is our recommendation that over time, the city needs to consider increasing the funding level that we use for our street restoration above the $500,000 that we're currently, with a goal of $500,000. And like I say, some years we don't do that, to about something more appropriate to the $650,000 range is probably what will be required to take us through the next several years. And, you know, tracking cost increases could require that we push that amount even further as, you know, percentage increases in our contract. I think that's pretty much what I wanted to go over.
Mayor, before we get to council comments, I'd just like to provide a little bit of context for why we're talking about this today. We probably should have said that at the beginning. But in addition to attempting to give council, some particularly new council, some insight into the ERR and CIP in preparation for the budget, because that often is a point that comes quickly and without a introduction, it can be hard to understand. We also are trying to address a couple of items that council directed staff to look at as a part of the FY26 original budget resolution that you all, that the former council issued back in July 2024. And so the particular points that this presentation was aimed at addressing are the review of the criteria for replacing vehicles. And so Director Braithwaite had touched on the changes that have been made to the fleet review policies, as well as kind of going into how that all works. The second item is the reevaluation of the road maintenance policy, as well as the adequacy of the proposed annual appropriations for street maintenance. And again, I think Director Braithwaite has given us a lot of detail on the historical funding as, as well as what we need moving forward. And for the future, I believe it's, it's the 19th, which is our next meeting, we will also be addressing a couple of other items that are included in this resolution. One is exploring increasing railroad and utility taxes, including scenarios on their impact to city residents, the promotion of a maintenance or development of a vacant property tax and identifying indicators for commercial market help. So all of those will be addressed next week. And that pretty much accomplishes all of what council intended us to accomplish for FY26 under this resolution.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Uvanks. That's really helpful context. And also just for my colleagues or newer colleagues at council, prior, prior working groups were, under the previous council, were also charged with exploring various aspects of, of this, which ultimately resulted in the, in the resolution and the presentation that we have today. I want to thank Director Chung and Director Braithwaite for a great presentation. It's always great when I walk away and I'm like, wait a minute. Okay, I, I did not realize that. So I am, I'm super, super excited for the depth of the presentation that you all provided today. I, I have a couple questions if folks would indulge me. One of the things that I noticed, and this is for Director Chung, that we knew was common, but it's here now, and that's that kind of transition between having those ARPA funds available and moving into FY26 when we won't have those funds available. I know that one of the things that we were really trying to do or striving to do was because we needed to spend the money, we wanted to spend it fast, and we didn't want to necessarily towards the end find ourselves in a situation where we were using the money for programs that we knew we weren't going to be able to continue once the funds expired. So we invested in concrete. So one of the questions that I have is, have there been thoughts around what the impact of this loss of ARPA funds would be going forward? It, it looks as if we're, we're projecting kind of a gradual decrease in the amount of, of funds that maybe we may need to have in terms of our grand total of the CIP. But are you all thinking that there may be some other hard choices that we may have to make, particularly as we are entering into this budget as it relates to the CIP?
In the FY26 budget, one of the move that we made is trying to utilize the, the red light camera fines that we're going to expect to increase tremendously in, in FY26. Right now, the current budgeted amount for the red light camera fine in 26 would be around $2.6 million. Okay, so we try to utilize that, that funding that is going to be available to us to, to put a lot of the capital improvement projects in the general fund to move over to the red light camera fund, to, to save up some funds in the general fund and to reduce using our general fund and assigned reserve. So in, in, in that sense, we try to build up our unassigned reserve as much as possible for the future, the financial sustainability. So this is one of the way to strategize to use our, our funding. We're also trying to look into some grant funding from the other sources. Unfortunately, the recent years, our recent news is not encouraging in the, in the federal funding, but hopefully we can still get some funding from state and from county. And mo- most of the funding, the intergovernmental revenue are coming from the county. So hopefully that source is not going to diminish. Hopefully it will have a continuous stream of funding source from county and from the state in the future.
Great. Thank you so much. And just a quick question for Director Braithwaite.
May I ask a follow-up question about the red light?
Yes, Councilmember Lamb, I'll go right in.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but since we were on that, I, I seem to recall during a presentation a couple of weeks ago that there had been a delay in the installation of some of the equipment that would, that would generate funding through, through fines. Is that going, is that correct? And is that going to affect what you just described in terms of where we go for those funding, for those monies?
We actually had quite a number of prolonged conversations with the police chief. And he is very optimistic that by 2026, fiscal year 26, all those remaining cameras will be installed. And it's only when, when we talk about that, that delay, it's mainly talk about fiscal year 25. The, the quarterly financial report that I presented, the city manager presented on that day, it was the first quarterly financial report of fiscal year 25. So looking forward, I think the chief is very optimistic that our red light camera fine will increase tremendously.
I'd like to also add that all of the cameras that we, the initial installation have been accomplished and were through the grace period. That was in late last year. So citations are being issued. The revenue is starting to come in for this current fiscal year. Yes, there were delays due to SHA and contractor. And we were hopeful, of course, this was going to be a time for the beginning of the fiscal year 25. But at this point, all of those cameras are installed and operating. There are also two others that we are asking SHA for ultimate permission. We are not figuring in or counting on that revenue yet, but should they come, come to pass, this is all tied to purple line construction schedule. They're on the intersection of University in New Hampshire, two cameras. We believe that could significantly increase. For the proposed budget, we're not counting on revenue for those two cameras because burden hand. But we, we do have the other, I believe it was six or so have been installed and they are fully operational and citations are being processed and have been for this past month.
Thank you very much. One other, well, I have a couple. So Director Braithwaite, you, you showed us the results from the street resurfacing and kind of where we are. In terms of the sidewalks, I tend, I believe, I feel like I recall seeing some maps where we have pretty extensive, although there are still some, some smaller streets that don't have at least one side with the sidewalk, we've been making a lot of progress in, in addressing the, the city need. Can you remind me of like how many, like where we are in terms of that infrastructure?
In terms of ADA compliance, we've got better data because we are tracking expenditures. For city sidewalks, we've done about 88% of the existing city sidewalks and made them ADA compliant, which improves the condition of them and removes trip hazards and corrects driveway apron slope issues. We got started with the state highway ADA compliance program many years after we had started our, our ADA on city sidewalks started in 2010 and 11. There was a brief pause and then got started back up again. Our ADA compliance work didn't start till like 2018. So we've been at it for less, less time. There are some significant sidewalks along state highway that we have yet to address. We've made some inroads, but we're not nearly to the coverage that we were, are with city sidewalks. In terms of new sidewalks, we can produce a map that shows really clearly where sidewalks are, existing sidewalks, and where new sidewalks have been added since the city's new sidewalk program was initiated. Again, prior to that program, we didn't have a mechanism for installing sidewalks. So it wasn't until the city established a new sidewalk program and set a funding level in the capital budget that we were able to do new sidewalk work. So that, that started in 2012. So since that time, we've put in significant amounts of sidewalk, particularly in Ward six, where they were pretty much missing, except in, in the New Hampshire Gardens area, there were very few sidewalks. Hillwood Manor, there are more. And so we've been able to do installations, both in heavily in Ward six. Of course, the Flower Avenue, Green Street project was one of our major sidewalk and traffic calling projects in Ward five, who have done quite a bit of work in Ward two as well, which also had a deficiency of sidewalks. Wards one and wards three are pretty well-covered sidewalk-wise, though there are some gaps. But the city has in the past had a gap analysis done. And we're, you know, now we have the new administrative regulations for sidewalks that you all passed and went into effect last year. So we're starting to work within that new process.
Great. Thank you. And just, I'm sorry, I should have just stuck with all of my Director Chung questions. So I just want to, one of the things that I've been really trying to wrap my head around, especially as we enter into the budget cycle, is kind of what is an ideal percentage contribution, or how much do we need to make sure that we're contributing to the ERR? I've heard horror stories from some of, some of the former council members and, you know, and they, they've highlighted how, you know, things went really bad when they pillaged the ERR for other purposes and then needed a trash truck and didn't have the money. So it's, is there, so is the goal or, or, you know, because I see that there are some recommendations throughout the presentation, is the goal to ultimately get us to the point where we're making contributions that are in alignment with the financial consultants' recommendations in order to make sure that the ERR is solvent?
Yes, we are trying to reach the target that is recommended by the financial consultant. And I, I, I believe 2026, we, we actually are going to contribute the recommended amount in in twenty six budget. So it is something that we we are very proud of. That we are able to reach this target as as in the recommendation by the financial consultant.
Great, thank you. And I think that's it. Councilmember Hansak?
Was Lynn, were you already?
I'll come back to. I just had that one.
Necessarily follow ups. They were new questions. Is that fine?
Yep.
Okay, okay. I, let's see. Thank you very much to both of you. This was incredibly helpful even for, I'm a newer incumbent. But I I learned a lot more, especially about the roads. I guess my first question is, sorry, I'm looking to see if I have one for Director Chung. Maybe this is kind of a question for both of you is, why is it that the, and maybe I've misunderstood, but for the E R R amount between nine hundred thousand and a million per year and also the what has been a five hundred thousand recommended amount, why are those static dollar amounts? Is it just because it's such a ballpark figure that we don't have any need to give it an inflationary index? I'm just a little puzzled by that.
The contribution in twenty twenty four, it was a bit lower. I don't know if you remember that year, we were actually trying to, it was in the in in the turnover time of the prior city manager with the the acting city manager, Eubanks. And then we were trying to work out how to make sure that we can maintain the sufficient balance in our reserve. Okay, we were trying to reach the seventeen percent of our target. So in order to reach that target in our assigned reserve, we have to forego some of the contribution amount in the E R R. So that was a a a a year that we did not contribute sufficient amount. But after that, in twenty five and also in the coming year, twenty six, we are contributing at least nine hundred thousand each year. To the year.
I think my question, my my question was a little bit different. I think my question was more about, and maybe I misunderstood with the E R R. Maybe different situation than with the amount for roads that has been recommended. Director Chung, did the consultants recommend for several years to come that we that we contribute between nine hundred thousand and one million dollars? Or is it a different amount for each year that they've recommended?
Director Chung, can I, can I? So the the consultant's recommendation is in line with the city's process. So so our E R R system, I'll call it that for simplicity purposes, takes into account inflationary adjustments. And so the the one million to one point one million dollar contribution is in today's dollars. In future years, assuming increases in equipment costs, that one million dollars will change.
Okay, okay, thank you. I thought it might be different than the than the number that I think was given out for the five hundred thousand.
And the five hundred is different and Director Braithwaite.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Other small point to make about the equipment replacement reserve is the the spreadsheet itself has a function to tell us what we need to contribute annually. There's a formula driven function that takes the life of the vehicle, life of the piece of equipment.
Yes, I recall.
Beginning balance, adds interest, how many years is left, and then it'll tell you mathematically what needs to be what needs to be included. Is it not on?
I don't think so.
There it is on. Anyway, maybe I was just not close enough. So in a perfect world, we'd run the the formula in the spreadsheet through the whole fifty years of E R R. And it would tell us what the amount will need to be, and it's largely influenced by how much was previously contributed. When we're having these years where we're only able to fund till twenty seven, that means from twenty eight on through the life of the spreadsheet, we're not contributing anything that year. So it puts us in a further deficit for that item, means that the next year you're going to have to contribute more because you didn't contribute the first year. So it kind of feeds amongst itself. That being said, it's a large dollar figure that's sitting in a fund for future replacement. And so there's oftentimes been a discussion amongst council about how can we just let that money sit there, right? So sometimes depending on people's point of view, it's hard to set that those funds aside because it really is a long term planning document. It's trying to spread out costs so you don't have these years with the two trash trucks costing six hundred thirty. You're just kind of staying at a level throughout the history so that you can avoid big ups and downs and ways to impact your budget. We haven't used that formula for as many years as I've been associated with the equipment replacement reserve, so.
Say that again. You haven't used.
Long time.
You have not. Have not used.
Have not used.
You mean?
Not been able to.
Because we can't get up to that level.
Yes, have not been able to.
Because the council always cuts it.
And I I will say, I was one of those people that cut like cut less, no, two years ago with the bus bus to delay.
And when you're balancing things, it's, it is, you know, you have to make some very hard choices. It's not going to cause a problem tomorrow. But, you know, ten years down the road, it just means it's going to cost more. As for the five hundred thousand for the streets, that was a figure that was based on the the volume of our streets, the condition of our streets and an estimate about the replacement, their resurfacing schedule, you know, twenty years and thirty three and a half miles. So that was a, that was in those dollars, in two thousand three dollars. That's what they told us we would need annually in order to maintain the roads. And again, we had cases, it doesn't look like it on the spreadsheet, but in the equipment replacement reserve or the capital budget over the years, we weren't putting that five hundred thousand dollars in. So again, it was a situation where we weren't able to meet that threshold, so it compounds itself over time.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious because it that's a long time for it to be staying.
Yeah, you know, in a perfect world now, we would have an inflation factor and, you know, calculate that in tied to some CPI or our five year contract.
And that's not written in any resolution, right, or any other procedure? Okay, okay, so it's just something we need to bear in mind. Okay, so then my, let's see, my second, I have three questions. So my second question is, maybe I just have two. I'm sorry. And then my second question is about sidewalks. You mentioned that the, this is for Director Braithwaite. You mentioned that W S S C will repave curb to curb any any streets that they have dug up because of water. I I have noticed a few, and I I haven't had a chance to ask you about it, a few posts that have been moved, and I don't really know why, maybe they put in a new post. But, you know, new newer sidewalks have been installed by the city, paid for by the city, and it's sort of the same deal. Do we have any kind of policy in place for that or arrangement with P E P C O about that kind of thing? And and furthermore, if we see a situation where we notice something that's been there, we're not exactly sure how long, but it's clear that it really hasn't been repaired, what what can we do?
Yeah, yeah. They, any utility company that affects anything in the right of way, whether it's relocating a utility pole or moving a water meter or, you know, hydrant or, you know, running their truck over a piece of sidewalk and cracking it up, they're they're required to restore that and replace that. It it does take constant haranguing of the utilities to get them to come back. Sometimes with different area managers, they're very good about keeping a list of those things and coming back to it. But usually, not for streets, they're pretty good about streets, but for those other incidental items within the right of way, they very much need to be reminded. So if you find those situations, just.
Yeah, we've got a couple, and I guess, okay, so you you would chase them a little bit on our behalf? Okay, thank you for that offer. I know that's another thing for you to do, but, okay, thank you.
We pass it on to our construction manager who has got good relationships with our utility.
But did they, and do they follow the same process? Do they tend to temporarily fill in like a piece of sidewalk and then supposedly they're going to come back later? Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about the way that the the equipment, the equipment replacement reserve has operated in the past and things that might potentially affect it. I'm thinking back to an early conversation with you, City Manager Disparito, about how certain communities that you had worked with before had, rather than owning each piece of equipment that they might use, that they had a sharing or arrangement for some of those pieces of equipment. And some of them might be the big expensive ones that you don't use all the time. I'm wondering whether the spreadsheet that that Director Braithwaite referred to has some pieces of equipment like that on there and whether that's something that you are looking into exploring that the city might take advantage of, the way that you told us that you had done in Rockville. And the second related part of that question is, we did hear from the electric vehicle I C F report the other day that there was a potential for smoothing out the costs of vehicle replacement with leasing program. It might wind up costing the same, but it, I don't know if that's the case or not. And I wonder whether that also enters into the thinking going forward since that would be a big change if we were to move in that direction for our for our police vehicles, which is a fairly large price tag. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So currently, our equipment replacement reserve balance sheet, that fifty year balance sheet does not include any share equipment program, okay? And it's all pertaining to purchases, any purchases. And we put those purchases put in, put into every cycle. For example, a police vehicle is going to be purchased, is purchased in fiscal year twenty twenty five, and it's an eight year cycle. So by twenty twenty, thirty thirty three, then we we need to purchase that vehicle again. But that purchase cost will be much higher than twenty twenty five because of the inflation, because of the interest, and all these are added to the new cycle of that particular vehicle. So these are all new purchases that we include in the spreadsheet. And and with reference to your question of the E V leasing program, I think the deputy city manager has looked into a program like that. And I'm not sure it will be going forward. We are kind of going to look into the program to see if it is going to work for the city.
So to to address your first point, while I don't know, and Director Braithwaite can probably answer this directly, whether or not there are items in there that would be appropriate for some kind of shared relationship with neighboring jurisdictions. We do periodically review the E R R list. And based on our historical experience, do remove things from the list. So in recent, this year, in our review of the E R R, we took two relatively expensive items off. And we will, if if needed, we will rent them. And then for the previous year, we removed, you all may recall that there were two wreck buses, a large and a small one, and that one of those buses was recently removed from the E R R. So in in those dollars, if if there had been some savings that was associated with those items, the good thing is that those dollars stay in the E R R and they are later contributed to to something else. So it's helpful in that way. And then to address the second point, Director Chung is absolutely right. In the FY twenty six budget, we have included some some dollars for a review of a leasing option. And we've developed a high level scope. It still needs some tweaking. We talked to a couple consultants about it. We're not at the level where we're ready to speak to to it in detail, but it is conceptualized in the budget.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah. First of all, thank you very much for for addressing these these items that were in the resolution, that the budget resolution from last year. Because it's great to have this now before we start seeing the actual budget and getting into the details of the dollars. Very, very helpful. I really appreciate it. Doesn't stop me from having questions, but it but it really does help. I I think I have one basic question, and maybe I'm misunderstanding. So on, it's about the capital improvement program overall. It's page five. There's a table, the bottom line is C I P grand, grand total. And there's a big and continuous drop in the total of the C I P in the next few years. Every year, the number gets smaller and the first, the biggest jump is between twenty five and twenty six. And and I'm just not remembering why that happens.
Yeah.
Thank you. So so the the difficulty with the number for twenty twenty, the numbers for twenty twenty five is that they also include the library construction. So they give us a false, a misleading sense of what the regular capital budget is. Okay.
Yeah.
So if I wanted to have a sense of what the regular capital budget is, including stormwater programs, et cetera, I would be looking at fiscal twenty six and saying.
Yeah, the the twenty five budget, especially with the ARPA fund, you can see that on the on the middle of of the section of the spreadsheet. And under ARPA fund, in twenty twenty five, projected number is about six point four million dollar. And that six point four million dollar is mainly a lot of the general fund expenditure. C I Ps were moved from general fund to ARPA because we tried to use the ARPA fund as much as possible.
So we moved some things up a little.
We, you know, when the fund is going to be exhausted. So so this is one way that we 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 try to make the best use of the available ARPA fund. And the regular expenditure in C I P, you can see that from twenty seven onward. The the general fund expenditure will be around, well, five million dollar and four million dollar or even two million dollar in twenty twenty nine. So so that expenditure is going to go down depending on how much we are going to use for the C I P in the general fund. And the other, our other funds, and we can see that the ARPA fund is totally zero out, starting from twenty six. And then the red light camera fund and the special revenue fund and the remaining is the stormwater fund.
Director Chung, do the FY twenty five adjusted and projected numbers also include all of the amendments over the course of the year too?
Yes.
Including any carryover from.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. They were carryover from fiscal year twenty four and and moving into twenty five. That's why you can see that there are a larger number in fiscal year twenty five projected.
And Director Chung, one more question. Of the six point three million and projected for FY twenty five, four million of that is library construction, right?
Yes, four point five million dollar is actually four point seven five is for the library construction.
Out of the six point three.
And that's just the ARPA portion. It doesn't include the the bond portion, which is a little bit higher.
Yeah, the bond, the bond portion, right now, only in the in the serious bond, we only have one point one six million left for the 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 serious bond. And after we use up this one point one six million, all the bond fund will be gone.
And so when we're talking about using nine hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, excuse me, we're not talking about using it, we're talking about depositing it so that we have it, the nine hundred thousand plus a year on sidewalks. Or is that on roads? And six fifty on streets. So those two together, those are E R R both. But those two together are a pretty big chunk of the general capital.
The sidewalks and also the street rehabilitation are coming from the general fund.
Right.
Are usually in the general fund. So if you look at the line, the third line from top, G F, that's the line that represent all the general fund C I P expenditures.
Yeah, I guess what I was getting at is is that streets and sidewalks are a bigger portion of the total capital budget. Everybody shaking their head like you all know this and I should know this too. Much bigger portion than I had quite realized. You know, I've always been focused on cars, so I'm just realigning here. Thank you.
Yep, our our C I P is concrete and asphalt.
Concrete more than.
Concrete and asphalt.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it's about five hundred, five hundred thousand for the new sidewalks and ADA and also five hundred thousand for the street rehabilitation.
Right.
So normally, we need to spend at least one million dollar on the roads. So normally, we need to spend at least $1 million on the roads.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you. Thank you both for this really, really helpful presentation. While we're on that same slide, slide five, when I'm looking at fiscal year '27 and the CIP total there from general fund, it's quite a bit higher. Is that having something to do with the atrium project? Because it's not, atrium project isn't mentioned in the bullet points above.
Because on the bullet point above is about the CIP purchases of fiscal year '25. So the '27 and '28, why the number is much higher? '27 is about 3.9, and '28 is about 3.2. Those two years, we have atrium room project that include 1.5 million each year. So that actually ramp up the cost for general fund expenditure in CIP.
Thank you. And then as far as the, there's been some discussion of a public works project, is that in the CIP anywhere at this point?
A lot of the public works project and other CIP project, right now, we're trying to use that in the ARPA fund. After '26, we are going to push to the general fund. So you can see that a lot of, we have a huge expenditure in CIP in the general fund in '25 and '26. '25 is about 3.9 million in the general fund, and the '26 is about $3 million. And in the ARPA fund in '25, we have 6.39, '26 we have zero. So these are all mainly the projects that we are going to use in the ARPA fund. And also that includes some of the library constructions.
So Director Chung, I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're all clear in terms of, and Councilmember Schlegel, I know that you mentioned the public works effort. So you're talking about stormwater or the actual facility?
The facility, because as I understand it, we're requesting $500,000.
Okay. So, yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're all clear and that the ARPA funds were put towards the library. We have the community center redevelopment, but that also kind of, you know, includes some aspects of atrium stuff. So those, those projects are using the ARPA expenditures for the public works facilities, and definitely correct me if I'm wrong, city manager or deputy city manager, the facilities, meaning the building of the new works, workstations and the facilities that are needed that we just asked our District 20 to help us with supporting, it's my understanding that is not in this projected outlook because it is not something that we have gone so far as to completely price out. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that we were requesting, we have requested the funds from District 20 to provide us with the resources necessary to develop and get designs and to get an understanding of what the actual construction would entail. And then that would then become a point of discussion for this council in terms of whether or not we want to identify, whether or not we can get external funds to support it, or whether or not we want to go down the path of soliciting bond funds for it. But I think it is important for everybody to understand, it's a lot harder to price out something if you don't have designs in the scope of work, even if you are trying to get external monies to actually do the construction. And it takes years by the time you actually get your designs and everything kind of worked out before you're at a place where you're ready to start putting a shovel in the ground. City Manager Disperdo?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. All of that is correct. We are not showing in any out years any estimated cost for the public works facilities. It's correct that we're presently pursuing, you know, outside funding for some design work. And if, should we receive that, that of course won't be general fund, that'll be special revenue that would come in. But we, this table does not reflect any estimated cost, and we wouldn't have that cost until such time as design, concept and design occurred. And then it, of course, would be ultimately the mayor council's decision as to whether to proceed, you know, whether to proceed, and if so, how much and when those expenditures should occur.
Okay. Thank you. And just to make sure I'm understanding, on the atrium project is not what we're calling library and community center? That includes the recreation portion of this floor, correct? The atrium project is something that we're seeing in the out years for FY '27 and '28?
Yeah. The atrium project, on my capital improvement project in FY '26, there is $1.2 million we are allocating to the general fund. And then there is $200,000 we are getting the grant money to support the atrium renovation. So the total project cost is showing up in fiscal year '26, and the total project cost is 1.4 million. 1.2 from general fund, 200,000 from the grant. So total is 1.4 million in FY '26. And as far as the public works building facility, at this point, my spreadsheet shows FY '26, we're going to have a design cost of about $150,000, and the actual construction is going to be in '27. And that cost, right now, our estimation is 850. So 850 plus 150, the total cost would be $1 million.
I wanted to clarify something that I think may be of confusion because currently, when the council, we'll show you the full five-year CIP, but the council only approves that next fiscal year. So when you review the budget, you'll only be approving expenditures for '26. The other years are shown, and they, as you will know, will adjust and change over time, but it's basically trying to provide a snapshot of likely future costs so you can get a sense of historic costs. The council isn't approving the five-year CIP. There are some jurisdictions where they do approve two-year, three-year, five-year CIP, and those, those projects are locked in. The city doesn't perform that way. We only approve the next year's budget, but we show the five-year likely expenditure or potential projects. And those numbers will change as we get closer to the time. They're basically placeholders in the out years at this point.
If I may just add to that, thank you. Those cities that tend to show five-year CIPs that have some, you know, formality to them tend to be ones where they're in a position to have identified funding for multiple years out. Most cities aren't in that, don't have that luxury, and we don't, and of course, you understand it. Mayor Council allocates on an annual basis, not literally on a multi-year basis, although you can, you can plan and commit, but ultimately, it's a, it's a one-year allocation plan. The, with respect to the atrium project, that had been, that's been originally in FY ' '25. And the delay on that is because, as the library project was delayed, we can't, we can only stage one contractor at a time. Couldn't begin that project. We ultimately, you know, will be looking to go to bid and bring to the mayor council a contract in FY '26. And the proposed budget will reflect rolling that atrium project forward to FY '26 because logistically, there's no way to do it in FY '25.
Yeah. Thank you, city manager, for clarifying that because I remember, and again, it feels like light years ago, but at some of the earlier stages, I want to say like in FY ' '24, when we were dealing with some of the ARPA funds, and the desire at the time was to try to, you know, leverage the contractors and the project management team that was dealing with the library and the community center to also kind of help with the facilitation of the atrium work. And the hope was that we would be able to leverage, you know, aspects of ARPA dollars to do all of that, but because of some of the construction, the things got unsynced in terms of the timing. So it's really helpful to know that this is now where, in the CIP, this project would live. Okay. So it would be in, as part of the '26?
Yes.
Okay.
And when the council reviews the budget, you will see a fully detailed CIP. So no need to write, jot down things now. You'll see line by line, every single thing for the, out for the whole five years. So you will see a 10-year page document that is the capital improvement program. So that's coming. We didn't want to get lost in the numbers now. We're really trying to do higher picture, higher level overview of how the, how the fund works.
Okay. Great. If I, if I might ask, there one more, I'm just now confused. What's the, in FY '27 and '28, and I know we'll see more details later, but you mentioned 1.5 million additional in general fund for each of those years. And what is that projected to be paying for those, those big lumps in FY '27 and '28?
I'll answer that. That's been shown for numerous years, maybe as many as 10, as future additional improvements to the police department facility. I'll be honest, they're undefined, and they, those numbers predate Chief DiBala and myself. And I'm going to be recommending that we no longer show those, that instead, we look in FY '26 to do some concept planning, to really try to determine what additional needs and what level priority the police facility has for the next 10 to 20 years. Okay? And this is separate from the atrium project. But there are other areas in there. You know, we've got, the city doesn't have a Sallyport for transferring prisoners. You know, it's done out in the open next to a playground. We have locker rooms, employee areas, offices where there's issues with HVAC and plumbing and other things. Some very basic stuff. Those have just been loosely identified. No particular dollars have been assigned to any of that, and I'm uncomfortable just continuing to, I think every year, the numbers just kind of roll forward to be just beyond the allocation year. So I would rather, if we're going to, and this is something ultimately, you all as mayor and council can decide, is whether you wish to have that examination, wish to have that investigation of further needs in the police department. But for us to continue to show 1.5 million for two years, for each of two years, without any defined purpose for it, and of course, it inflates numbers and charts like this, but I think more importantly, it just is not defined, then I just think it's probably best to not show that, much like we are not showing a number yet for a decision you have yet to make about a potential improvement at the public works facilities. Let's do the design and then decide.
So I do want to make sure that we're not confusing folks because there was a lot of work that was done in terms of the atrium fill-in that would include office space and improvements as it connects to not only where our mental health counselors would have their space, but also the police department office space and dispatch. So I want to make sure that, you know, if we are talking about other improvements that may be outside of the scope for the atrium, that we, we make that point really clear because what I, what I don't want to have happen is there's this thought that we're not, you know what I mean? That there's just confusion in terms of which monies are being forecasted out for which projects when they may be related to one another. Like if you're going to improve office spaces, you know, logically, if you're creating new space, you more likely than not will probably want to improve the HVAC. It's kind of running through them, right? So I just want to make sure that it's really clear to this council what is involved in the, or at least what was anticipated being part of the atrium project. And I know there was extensive presentations that were done years ago with designs and all of that good stuff that we may want to share with this council just so that everybody has a clearer understanding of what the atrium project entails.
Sure. Great. That will be very helpful to fully understand how the atrium project is different from other potential police department improvements downstairs, and then how there might be some necessary overlaps that, you know.
Yeah. The need with the atrium project has been, up to this point, very clearly defined. And there's discrete plans. A lot of thought has gone into it, and mayor council, you know, and previous mayor councils have had an opportunity to deliberate on what the atrium project was going to be all about. So clearly, yes, Madam Mayor, that is distinctly different than the, I'll say, the 1.5 million figures. That's separate, that's for, but rather than just push those numbers out every year, I'm going to recommend to the council frankly, that you consider letting us look hard at really what might those next steps be? And then ultimately, you get to make the decision whether we proceed in some fashion or not. And just not show big capital numbers that aren't really based on anything yet at this point.
Yeah. I wanted to clarify that the numbers that we have for the atrium are actually cost-estimated numbers that Arcadis, our firm, did. And it's based on full set of design drawings. So they're, they've been fully designed, they've been submitted to the county. We had initial permits when we thought we were moving forward then. So these are fully baked, totally detailed, down to the finishes and the floor tiles and the light switches. So it's a fully completed project. So that and that estimate we have has had to increase over time because we, we had one price, and then we asked them to give us a cost estimate for, you know, since it's been delayed a couple of years. So this is the most recent projected cost estimate for that project based on very finite set of plans. Anything future, be it public works or future improvements in the police area, have not gone through that level of design. There's been some initial concept work, but it was 10 years ago or more. So it's, we tend to take a long time to do capital improvement, particularly for facilities. So they, they tend to get stretched out quite a bit. And I would just encourage you, when you're doing your tours, I know you're, the new council is coming to do a public works tour, I'm sure you're going to be doing a police department tour, you can see very specifically where the needs are and what's envisioned for those future projects.
Great. And I recall, there was a really good, and I don't know if Director Braithwaite, if there's additional updates that folks can learn about during the tours, but there was a very good presentation that former councils received on the atrium, including all of the designs and all of the walkthrough and the signage and what things would look like.
Yeah. I think we could probably find when it was done in the council and just refer you to that.
That video, which I think is great.
Could that be made available to the public as well as, you know?
Yeah. It's on the website. It's on the web.
It is. There's a project page. Okay.
On the project page, but it would be in the council.
We have it in the council materials, and we'll share that.
We can pull that out, try to figure out a way, a place to put it.
Mayor, seriously, I realize I had asked a question, then we got into all this other stuff. I don't want to overdominate. I had a couple of other questions, but I'll defer to colleagues if they have questions.
Is there any other questions? Nope.
Okay. Well, with the, on the ERR side, on the fleet replacement policy, the three-point system, it reminds me of when I used to direct plays because we would audition kids, and we'd say, can they sing? Can they dance? Can they act? At one point for each. But I'm thinking about the first, the first point with the police, with the mileage. And, you know, the obvious question is, you know, people say cars last longer now. So how do you calibrate the 100,000 or the 125 being the break points where you need to give at a point in favor of replacement? And do you do that on the base of models? Do you talk with other jurisdictions? How's that?
It's been an informed amount based on past history and longevity of cars, particularly in regard to police cars, because they get used a very different way than, than other cars. And I don't want to steal the chief's thunder. I know other council members have heard this a lot. A police car is left on for most of its 12-hour shift, which is very, very different from personal vehicle or even a public works vehicle, which is just turned on when it's in use. or even a public works vehicle, which is just turned on when it's in use when we're plowing. Otherwise, it's off. So because of that, they have a very different, you know, the impact on the vehicle's operation and the cost of maintenance is is a reflection of that. So this is based on past history. It's based on our understanding of costs and it's based on the police's sense of, you know, the type of work they do and how the vehicles are used. And so it's just a best case scenario that was developed. Different cities will have different criteria. We have a very different type of city than you would if you were in a rural area in terms of it's all, you know, secondary roads, some highway miles, the type of driving that they do and how how long they're on. So this reflects the city's current use of police vehicles. And, you know, we we certainly take a look at it every year where we're evaluating vehicles. If we find that vehicles are in decent shape and don't need to be replaced, we, you know, that that gets teased out in part of the evaluation. So it's it's not necessarily an absolute, you hit a hundred thousand miles, we're replacing you. These other factors have to go into play, including conditional aspects and maintenance costs. So it's a multi multi layered evaluation.
Good to know. And so that relates to I'm turning to the the other side, the street, the concrete side of things. I had, I I was, it was great to learn and I and I think I'll be happy to share this with people that if I'm understanding correctly, there's no longer an automatic twenty year replacement schedule. But it sounds like at in two thousand four, just take just taking on this huge ball of problems. You said, let's do a twenty year replacement. And so now we've been through twenty years and I just wanted to confirm that we're now using these every five year surveys of actual conditions to to inform the the order of operations.
Yet we always have since the beginning we started in two thousand three. There is no hard fast, you know, twenty years and it gets replaced. If that was the case, we'd have millions of dollars of road repair that we'd need to do in any given year because that's just the way it works. So it's always conditional and a road will vary very much differently depending on its use. Vehicles are getting eighteen thousand miles, eighteen thousand cars in a week are going to be far different than a cul-de-sac that gets, you know, only the people that live there. So that's that, that's why we do the pavement condition analysis, so we're really looking at actual conditions. And that's why we do it and the frequency that we do, you know, you don't need to do it every year. We think every five, six or seven years pretty much is a gives you a pretty good picture. And can also show your impact. So you can see if you're if you're if you're meeting your goals over time.
Sure, yeah. And when I, when you shared the list of the remaining projects for F Y twenty five, actually, this earlier today, I went out and I looked at Columbia, for example, and I looked at Sligo Mill and shared it. And I can see I could see distinctively holes developing on this on steep slopes on Columbia. So I'm just saying that for people watching that like, you know, there's there's a there's a science to this. I can see that. I wondered, one last question. See if I can find it. Thanks for your patience. Are you able to compare how we handle street resurfacing with what Montgomery County does? For when people ask and they say, you know, well, I I'm in East Silver, when I'm in East Silver Spring, it looks like they got fine streets there. What's the difference? You know, just anything that we can understand about the L O S level of service that we're getting.
I don't have any detailed information about Montgomery County's road resurfacing program. We can look into that. Again, it's kind of a different kind of roadway when you're evaluating of a county county wide scale. Though I would challenge anybody to drive through portions of Silver Spring and say they have good road conditions. The roads in most of Montgomery County, particularly in Silver Spring, are in deplorable condition.
Well, okay, one more. People in my neighborhood, Pinecrest, they always say, oh, just before you moved here, it was dirt roads, gravel roads. What is the truth on that? Were there actually gravel roads when we annexed?
No, there were no gravel roads. There were some roads that were so, you know, pavement was so bad that it was ravelling and lifting up and you had, you know, ass loose asphalt, curb asphalt on the roads. There were definitely roads that were in very, very bad shape. In addition to that, so were the curbs and gutters. They had no sidewalks. It was some pretty, pretty rough shit, but no dirt roads.
Thanks, I'll go to historic Tacoma for further questions.
Thank you.
Director Chung, it might just be worth, just coming back to your second to last question about comparison to the county. We we do receive, and I could be mistaken, but I don't think I am. We do receive tax duplication dollars for some of our roadways. And and Director Chung, do you know offhand how much we actually or Director Brathwaite, how much we receive annually?
I know we get highway user revenues from the state. I don't know if we get if counties.
It's transportation.
I think we do receive some road maintenance interdepartmental, intergovernmental form. But I do not want to say how much exactly. I would say it's lower than three hundred thousand. Yeah, around around that that number, but I can give you the exact number tomorrow.
Thank you.
I also want to encourage members of council.
Road maintenance from the tax duplication.
Also want to encourage council members, there will be an upcoming Montgomery County M M L chapter meeting this month where the county will be walking through the tax duplication numbers for elected. So you should receive an invite for that and it'll it's it's always a party.
And the carpooling is so much fun.
All right, Councilmember DeVal.
Yes, thank you. One, one other question about the fleet policy. So we had a separate briefing on the transition to E Vs, the charging, the maintenance, the all of that. So that will clearly be a different set of criteria. Well, it'll be the same set of criteria, but it might be different numbers in terms of mileage and years and so forth. When do you think we might, are we talking about next year that we'll see that or sooner than that?
Have a have a category for E V.
Yeah.
Well, we're still learning. You know, we've got eight E Vs now in the city's fleet, so we're still tracking them. We have them on a assumption of less years and miles than gasoline powered cars just because we have a lot more familiarity with that. So, you know, we look for most of our administrative vehicles, even though it says ten years here. We're not replacing vehicles for thirteen, fifteen years, the department administrative vehicles. But we've put the E Vs that we have out a ten year cycle, assuming that we're going to have battery issues. And we'll just live and learn. We haven't had one yet for ten years, so we're still on the newer side of those vehicles. The other unique thing about cities vehicles, for better or worse, particularly the department vehicles, other than police, don't get driven a lot. So that's actually a kind of a hard thing on a vehicle to not get regular road use of a of a certain quality. So it's a different kind of factor. So you can end up with a very old car with very low miles.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Not seeing any other hands. Thank you all so much. This has been a very informative presentation and we really appreciate what you've what you've done and how you've been able to walk through some pretty complex things in a short amount of time. So thank you. Next, we have our work session on the board and committee appointments. Yep, we're going to keep going if folks are okay with that. This is our last item. All right, so with that, I'm going to turn things over to our our working group on committees.
Mike, can you hear me now? Okay, I'm going to speak on behalf of the subcommittee members, which are Councilmember Schlegel, Councilmember Gilbert and myself. But if you have anything to add, my fellow subcommittee members, please chime in at any time. So you can see that the on the cover memo, I'm just going to review a few of the basics. And actually, I'm going to look to my incumbent council members about how much detail is useful for me to go into and then maybe you can ask questions. The city, the city reviews applications twice a year for, but they are, you know, we receive applications on a rolling basis. It is my understanding that in in prior years, we didn't necessarily have two specific times a year that we reviewed the applications. But now that is the periodicity, so we do that in approximately January and June. This time around, we received eighteen applications. One person applied, one person applied to three different committees. We had a discussion about whether or not we have ever appointed anybody to more than one committee or board at a time. I, none of us knew the answer, but we generally kind of were thinking probably not. And I don't think it's in our procedures. And and I'll just going to go over the criteria that was set up by prior councils for for what we are looking at as we go through and make recommendations. One of them is residency and other individual committee requirements, their expression of interest, their technical expertise or their lived experience, their organization and community affiliation. We look at diversity and inclusion, including age, race and ethnicity, gender and their ward award diversity. And then we look at their contributions to the group, their skills, their lived experience, their teamwork and their perspective. So for for newer council members, I think it's really important, as I learned when I came in two years ago, that the city council made quite substantial changes in two thousand twenty one to city committee scope, charges and membership. And they were, they were trying to increase the effectiveness and efficiency of committees, but also to attract new members and use innovative ways to engage residents who are harder to reach. And if you'll see in our existing priorities, which we're working on changing, but probably not by too much in relation to this particular one. This is aligned with our council priority of engaged, responsive and service oriented government and trying to improve improve our systems for council appointed committees and and make sure that we've got more engaged engaged committees that reflect the diversity of our community. So in that, in that vein, council member, excuse me, mayor, could you just remind me? Do I, is it, is it appropriate for me to name the specific names of who we're thinking at this point? Is that, do we do that at this stage? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
So you would just na communicate the the committee and the name and their award.
Okay, so among those, we made eleven recommendations. There was no one who applied to the Arts and Humanities Committee. On for the Board of Elections, we are going to recommend Rhonda Reeves of Ward Four. For Colta, Jessica Orsler of Ward Two. No one applied to the Emergency Preparedness Committee at this time. For the Ethics Commission, we are recommending Siddharth Ramalingam of Ward One. And for the Grants Review Committee from Ward Three, Ryan Lander. And from Ward Five, Rena Schiff. And for the Recreation Committee, from Ward Six, Lisa Shrihart. From Ward Five, Sarah Langston. From Ward One, Shayna Fulcher. From Ward Five, Mariah Kemp. For the Sustainable Maryland Committee, from Ward Five, Erica Baller, Baller, Baller Road. I'm excuse me, I'm not sure how to pronounce that name. From the tree, for the Tree Commission, from Ward Six, Lacy Allison. And those, and then there were five applicants for whom we were not able to provide recommendations for appointments at this time. You'll see, you'll see on the back of your memo some, what's a feature I would like to draw your attention to about racial equity considerations. Our subcommittee has taken the time to do a very detailed analysis of the existing composition of all the committees across the city. That was something I was really eager to see as an incumbent, in particular, having been on this committee before. And and also to see what the change would look like when we, were we to vote on these recommendations that we have just made. I don't, right now, I think, I think that our city clerk has given me the data that is historical, I believe, but I haven't had a chance to analyze all of that in comparison to this. But what I can tell you is I did, I did an analysis that gave me a lot of pleasure. I love numbers, but also I just want to tell you what I saw. Let's, so if we were to approve these eleven recommendations, I looked at all the different factors. We would be close to gender balanced across all of our committees on the city in the city. We don't have data on every single one of our members, but that I think that's a really big positive. Our city has about fifty one or fifty two percent females. So, you know, if we're trying to get gender balance. We would have, this is an interesting one that I think we should really give some consideration to. We would still have approximately double representation from wards one, two and three compared to wards four, five and six. That's, but but we have been making progress. So this is good. This is good, but that's still substantial. We would, we have disproportionately many more people between the ages of forty one and fifty five years of age and older than fifty five. So we might think about working harder to seek out younger members in our community because they comprise more than thirty percent of our community under the age of eighteen. Looked up that data. I don't have a breakdown of data according to the age categories that we have set out in our application, so I can't give you more details on that. And then if you look at racial diversity in our city, I think we can still aspire to achieve greater representation on our committees that reflects our city's compositions or a lot closer to our city's composition. Our census data from two thousand twenty shows that our city is comprised of about forty three percent white alone. These are categories from the census, not Hispanic. Thirty three percent black alone, five percent Asian alone of these, fourteen percent Hispanic and nine percent two or more races and two percent American Indian. But so that's, that's what our our actual city looks like. But our committees are still comprised of more than sixty percent white members. So that compares to forty three percent, right? And again, much better than we were before. And so I still, I would still say, I think that we could make a lot of progress on increasing participation of our black and particularly our Hispanic populations, which comprise a really large percentage. And I actually have been meaning to reach out to the clerk and just double check. I forgot to put this in my questions. Do we gather data specifically on Hispanic, on Hispanic residents within our application at the moment? And if you don't know, that's okay. I didn't see it clearly.
I don't think it is clear.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, it was something that I took note of and I need to dig deeper with you and and learn more about the data. But anyway, if anybody would like to see this, I'm happy to circulate it. I just thought you might be overwhelmed by the number of charts that are on here right away. So are, do my colleagues have anything to add?
That's great. We have a long way to go. I mean, there's a big difference between forty three percent white and sixty percent white on the committees and boards and such. So what could I add? I I wanted to say just to note that we had a short, very short recruitment window here, especially with two of our members coming on new. And I would ask that, you know, knowing the the kind of goals we have and that there are still vacancies and there will be new vacancies opening up. Is it in June that they open up or is May the deadline for applications?
So terms that are expiring expire June thirtieth. So April, May and June are the times we would be recruiting.
Yeah, so we talked as a committee about the the value of like, when you, when you get to know someone or when you meet someone who seems to be taking interest in city affairs, just to ask that that follow on question, like, have you ever thought about being involved? You know, some someday I might bring up in our work group at least, the idea of almost like a random jury duty thing where you, you know, your name got pulled, we're putting out an invitation to you. Have you thought about being involved? You know, there's that. And then I also wanted to flag that we still have the unresolved issue with the Noise Control Board, which is completely vacant at this time. But now our current working group on committees needs to circle back and bring some recommendations to all all the council about how to handle this because the ordinance, Noise Control ordinance does call for complaints to be heard by a a panel from the Noise Control Board.
Yeah, we had some conversation about that the other day, also during our housing community development meeting. And Deputy City Manager Yebanks, I'm not sure. I don't want to try to quote you with the conversation that we had and whether or not we're going to be retooling that committee. But there definitely need to be some conversation between the police department and and housing about how we we deal with those those issues.
Yeah, I I share my perspective, but my understanding.
Yeah, I share my perspective, my understanding of council's intent, but I think probably council, maybe mayor and Councilmember Baller better suited to talk about what the intent is with the Noise Control Board.
Sure, happy to. So at a time, far, far, far away, back in, what, 2022? The, the, the council was going through the process of revisiting all of its committees. We, we did a very thorough process of going through all of the charters, all of the charges, what's in the code, how are we dealing with recruitment, what are some challenges? And one committee in particular, the Noise Control Board, had people who were willing to volunteer, but they just never got any cases. So they were basically meeting, I mean, they, they were ad hoc, you know, but they didn't get, they didn't receive cases. And so one of the things that we were charged with was figuring out what to do. We didn't want to waste the volunteers' time because that could leave a pretty, you know, annoying kind of feeling in your mouth. You're, you're committing your time, but you're not receiving cases that warrant you, you volunteering. And then we started to think about whether it makes more sense for us to work with an external party to offer, because what we're talking about really is mediation services. You have a disagreement with a neighbor around maybe noise and what you ultimately want is to have someone come in, be it a standing committee or someone else to kind of come in and serve that mediation role. And so where we left things and where we need to pick back up is conversations with, oh, you want to add?
I just wanted, I just wanted to add that we also looked at what the county did.
Yep.
What the county does, because they have very similar noise ordinance modeled on ours, actually. And they have a review board, but it's staff, it's staff, it's not a committee, it's not a resident committee. So that didn't seem like asking Rick to be his own committee didn't seem like a great idea at, at the city level, right? So that, that didn't work out.
And then we moved to the idea.
Your idea, wasn't it? Mediation. Yeah. But we didn't, we didn't do anything.
So then, well, you know, we had a lot. I mean, we did have the MPAs. So then we, we went down the path and identified a nonprofit organization that actually does this, where they actually work on community mediation issues, particularly they also deal with noise. And so one thought was that we could work with a nonprofit organization to serve as that ad hoc entity that could be tapped. They would be objective, they wouldn't necessarily be city staff or code enforcement. It wouldn't be a committee of residents just sitting around waiting for someone to want to take that approach, but would be an entity that we would have available as a way to implement our noise ordinance.
Did we talk to them?
We did. We did speak to them. I don't, and you spoke to them as well, then I think in follow up, right?
Yeah, and then Ira left and things.
Yeah, we just haven't been able to proceed yet. I think, I think this is something the subcommittee can take up again. We can share a little bit more. It's the Conflict Resolution Center is the group that we were reaching out to that provides free conflict resolution services across the county. And, and anyway, but we, we have more steps to take if, if that's of interest to go that direction, so.
So that's the, that's kind of where things are with the Noise Control Board and what the, the working group on committees, you know, would be great for you all to pick up the mantle and start to move that forward and then come back to the council so that we can make a decision. I'm assuming that we would probably have to have some money, unless they just want to do it for free. So it would be great if you all could work with the clerk and come back with some recommendations and talk with the city manager, deputy city manager, just in case there may be a need for some sort of budget expense that we may want to have incorporated as part of the budget discussions that we'll be having soon.
Councilmember Hansak.
If anyone else had anything more to say about the noise board, I was going to bring up one more issue about the committees and recruitment. But did you, no, okay. I, I am, I am, like I said, I am going to pass this hefty document to you. It's about eight pages long with these tables and charts. But I just, I'm going to, I'm going to pass one of these papers each direction. What I want to point out to you is I, I put a little paragraph at the top of each one of these. Each one is a table that shows the composition of each committee, where we are in like, right now, and if you add the recommendations. But most importantly, if you're looking out at your ward and you want to think about who you might want to look for, what kind of person could this committee use and all the different attributes? I mean, we also lived experience and what they also bring to the table, but just in terms of our goal of diversity, I've tried to outline it for you at the top, like what's sort of missing and where we're at. So I'm just going to show you what that looks like so that you'll know what to look for when you're thinking about like, who, who might I be looking for as I go out into the community? Just look at the little paragraphs there and you can see. And then you can look at them electronically, just at the top of each one of these, if you want to take a quick, quick look to see what I've talked about.
I did, oh, you go ahead. I'm sorry, I forgot. You go first.
Councilmember Landman.
Two quick questions. One is, given that we have no volunteers for, I believe you said it was Arts and Humanities, am I right? And is that the one? And they have ongoing recommendations that we need from them for the grants program. In a situation, am I right about that? Are they the ones that do the?
No.
Okay. That's separate.
It's the Grants Review Committee.
Grants Review, okay. So I don't know then exactly what the Arts and Humanities Committee's responsibilities are. But I was wondering whether, when we have ongoing vacancies and no volunteers, whether we can have rolling nominations or whether it has to be, you know, only during the nomination season, you know? Or do we try and fill the vacancies on an ongoing basis?
Well, we, we try, we try to do a bit of a blitz, but one, to, and not to change your question, but I had a kind of question about, you had people who were, who asked to join a particular committee, but maybe you felt like they weren't quite right for that committee. For the people that we said no, did we offer, hey, we can't fit you in here, but we have vacancies here if you are interested? To be able to, if we, I guess if we, if we have vacancies and we have people that were turning away and there's no other reason other than they are looking to join a committee where maybe they, the, the working group didn't feel that they were necessarily better than the others who were interested in that committee? Did we send them a note to say, hey, we have some vacancies on Arts and Humanities, just in case you're interested?
We haven't done that this round yet. Is that usually part of what you would do or the, the subcommittee has done in the past?
Yeah, it, it might be the kind of thing we would do, the staff could do, I guess, earlier in the process, though, we're kind of at the end of the process, but we could still do that if you wanted to lay.
Yeah.
Certainly could do that.
It's something we could look at. We have five applicants for whom we were not able to provide appointments and we still have six vacancies across the committees. So, you know, it's something to consider. I will, I will say that I'm, you know, depending on what, what they were interested in, when they meet, what the composition is too of some of these, you know, we could, it's something we could think about. I don't know how we would want to think through that, but yeah.
City clerk?
I just wanted to address the, why the council moved away from appointing throughout the year. And the reason was, if one person applies, they'd get appointed. So without being able to consider other options. So it was, the, the habit was basically first come, first served. You, you apply, you get appointed because there's a vacancy. So the council moved away from that so that, that with, hoping to look at a pool of applicants to make selections from, not that we want to say no to anybody.
And it could well be that, that revisiting the existing applicant pool would be counterproductive. So I don't want to put that on the table as the way to go. I just, you know, thought about places where we do have continuing vacancies, opening up the process again. Anyway, it, it may be unrealistic, given where we are in the, in the season as well, that the next round is coming up so soon that it would, it would not be productive either. But it just seemed that if we have ongoing vacancies, that's also a feeling of incompleteness too.
If I could make an observation, Mayor, I, an observation I made of the pool and also this process, just going through it the once and now going through it third time, feeling a greater sense of responsibility this time, being the incumbent. I did notice that I think it definitely helps to have that moment of, of looking at the entire pool as, as our, our city clerk has noted. But also I think that when you have that moment, there's a, a shared sense among this, the, the ward representatives to go out and seek people, to encourage them on, at that time to apply, whereas otherwise, you can see, we have double in certain places than in other places. So I think that is a very good step in the process in order to promote that representation. And it, and I, I'm pretty sure, but I'd have to look at the numbers, I had a sense that the five applicants that, that we weren't able to put in because, and it wasn't because we didn't appoint them to a place where there was a vacancy, it was because we filled, we filled each of the committees where they were full. I'm pretty sure that the demographics there, if we were looking at things like ward representation and, and race, that there is a higher concentration, just as we've seen already across the committees. So perhaps that, you know, that periodicity is really, really helpful for that particular goal. That's, that's my speculation. I can look again at the, the numbers.
May I ask one other question? The role of, of the Committee on Committees, I thought we were thinking of a more.
Working group. Working group on committee.
We can change that.
The laborers in the committee on committees, that I was wondering whether your charge also includes the question of how we take up pending recommendations from previous committee reports? Because that was something we had talked about in a previous council, previous council meeting. So I don't know if that's on your agenda or not.
So, so I will say, in terms of having the various committees come before us and kind of provide the necessary updates in terms of the recommendations, or if there are committees like the, the Sustainable Maryland Committee that already has had some conversations with us about recommendations that we need to bring back, I am working with the clerk to try to figure out the timing in which we can have those conversations. So we've already identified, and I don't, I'm trying to remember, but Sustainable Banking, Committee on the Environment, I mean, I'm sorry, Sustainable Maryland, Public Safety Task Force. I think it was the Complete Safe Streets. No, there were convert, yep. So I think that those were the four that we wanted to start with, primarily because it would not only be, it would be staff also having to be involved in making sure that they're providing the necessary feedback regarding where we are with the recommendations. Now, it could very well be the case that it wouldn't necessarily necessitate a full on presentation. It could be the case that depending on the recommendations and the amount of work that has been done, staff may just prepare a memo for council. But I have been working with the city management team to make sure that there's, at least for this initial tranche of reports where we have recommendations, that we have an update regarding the status of the implementation of those recommendations.
So in other words, nothing for the committee to, for working group?
It's just scheduling and staff work.
Okay.
That was my question, whether there's any, any call for the arc working group to do anything right now about it?
No, it's, it's really just scheduling and staff work because staff have the recommendations, staff have been doing the work.
Good question.
The big question is just making sure that we get that information to council and we schedule it in a way that's, that's feasible for, for staff, that especially while we're dealing with the budget. Councilmember DeBala?
A separate question. Adding people to existing committees. So I'd like to ask the city clerk if, if these names have been shared with, or will be shared with the committee chairs for their, or have we stopped it for their comment in case there's some, some thing they need, like the person has showed up and it didn't work out or whatever? I'm just wondering if that step has, is going to happen.
Some have and some have not.
Some have and some have not. Okay. But I, I can do that as well.
On your minds.
Raise us, right? Okay.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the, if you have any questions, and I just want to confirm with the clerk, that if, if people want to see information or the applications for, for those individuals that did apply, and if you have any questions regarding the recommendations that the working group has provided, you can either follow up with the subcommittee members or bring your question to the city clerk, because we will be voting on the, voting on the recommendations next week. All right. No worries. Sorry. All right. Any other questions, Scott? All right. So I think that's the end of tonight's meeting. I'm going to move to adjourn. Thank you very much. Everybody have a great night.